Good evening, I'd like to bring the meeting to order of the Wilmington City Council. I'd like to welcome all those who are with us here tonight and all those who are watching us at home on TV. Thank you for taking an interest in your government. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Clifford Barnett to give our invocation. If everyone will stand or remain standing afterwards for the presentation of...
Let us pray. Eternal Father, we thank you for another awesome day that you've given us. Beautiful weather, friends, family, and good health. We don't want to take those things for granted, nor do we want to take the opportunity to serve you for granted. We ask you to give us wisdom, grant us favor, grant us patience, grant us the idea or the thought of being able to hear you more clearly in all the things that we do so that we will help to make this city the city that you desire it to be. Thank you for the privilege to serve and be in our meeting today. In his name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several presentations this evening. Our first presentation is on the unsolicited proposal for the replacement of the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Chad Combs, who was in the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Mr. Combs, welcome.
Good evening. I am Chad Combs, Division III engineer here out of Wilmington, North Carolina. And this evening, we're going to have an open discussion about the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge. So we'll go ahead and get started. All right, Cape Fear Memorial Bridge, constructed in 1969, just turned 51 years old this past year. And just a little bit of background on the bridge itself, it has a movable component. That's the center span that you see there that goes up and down. And that height right there that you see is at 65 feet. When a vessel comes through, it goes up to about 130 feet. Couple of things to note here. Our maintenance on this structure for the fixed span, we know we have to do a major rehab on the fixed span every 20 years and for the movable span every 10 years. So we just recently completed a major rehab on the movable span, and that one was completed in 2019 for a cost of about $15 million. Yearly maintenance cost on this structure is around a half million dollars a year. Those are based on averages. I can tell you here in the last few weeks, the bridge tender house began having some leaks in the past few months. We got a contract together and got a contractor out there working on it now. Just that alone to stop those leaks is around $500,000. So just continual maintenance costs. Four-lane facility, it's handling about 60,000 cars today. It's anticipated by 2045 will be over 80,000 cars a day. Other thing to note, this bridge is safe. Don't let those major rehabs make you nervous. We do inspect this bridge every two years and the movable span we inspect yearly. So we are maintaining this bridge. This is vital to Wilmington, and we understand that. So based on all the maintenance repairs and knowing that we have to do these major rehabs, we kicked off a feasibility study. And these feasibility studies are very high-level looks on what it would take to replace a bridge. And we do this for every major project that we have. This allows us to go ahead and kind of estimate how much the project would cost and to get it into our, start planning on how to fund the project. So it's the initial step that can take years in the making, but this is our kickoff on starting to try and figure out how to, figure out how to replace it. So on this feasibility study here, like I said, it's a high-level look, but it also has some good information that all four options was determined it would have to be to the south of the existing bridge. We looked at four options, and first of all, we looked at similar option out there today, which is a 65-foot movable span. The other two options we wanted to look at was a 65-foot fixed as well as a 135-foot fix. And just for informational purposes, every structure on the intercoastal waterway to all of our islands that we are replacing are at 65 foot. We do know of one industry upriver that requires more than a 60-foot, 65-foot height requirement. We also looked, because of the Wilmington rail realignment plan, we also looked at a 65-foot movable span of the rail component. So those were the four options. This is what we call a typical section. This is what the feasibility identified was needed. And like I said earlier, it's a four-lane facility today. This would go from a four to a six lane. Each lane would be 12 foot in width. We would have 12-foot outside shoulders and a 22-foot median. This would allow, if you've got a disabled vehicle, this would allow that vehicle to get over. It also, because of the success of Surf City, it's got a 15-foot multi-use path on it. This would allow connectivity for pedestrians and cyclists to go from New Hanover to Brunswick County. And the bottom typical section there shows the rail component on the far right side. Probably the second most important thing on a feasibility study is to come up with some costs. So what I'll tell you tonight is not to focus on the cost, but look at the cost comparisons with each option. These costs were estimated in 2020. We're updating the costs as we speak, but this allows us to enter those costs into the prioritization for funding. But you can see the differences in all the options between option one and option two, pretty close to each other with the fixed spans, up to 250 million there. The option three for the movable span at 65 feet is about 500 million. And the option four, the rail component, about 600 million. So how does DOT fund a project? Our funding goes through the State Transportation Improvement Program. This is a 10-year program. Every two to three years, three years, we go through a prioritization process. We are currently going through P 6.0. It's just in order. We will take those costs and do an average based on those estimated costs, and we will enter into prioritization and see how it scores and competes against other projects in the state, region, and in this area as well. Based on today, we know for sure, based on the revenue and the funding that's in that 10-year program, this will not be funded in the next 10 years, but this project will continue to be going after funding in this process. So over two to three years, we will continue to go after our traditional funding. The next thing I'm getting ready to get into is the unsolicited proposal for a public-private partnership. The department did receive an unsolicited proposal back at the end of 2020. So what exactly is an unsolicited proposal? And basically, it's defined by any concept or submittal of a potential public-private partnership received by the department that is not a result of a direct specific advertisement. So basically, this is someone coming to the DOT soliciting an idea. DOT did not advertise this. What is the purpose of a public-private partnership? And the primary purpose of a public-private partnership is to leverage public funds or other resource with private investments to accelerate, enhance, or otherwise improve the delivery, operation, or maintenance of public transportation infrastructure. And this was per public session and also board adopted policy by DOT. So this is per policy. Getting into just a few minor details of the unsolicited proposal. This is an idea from a developer at this point, and that's all it is. And they went off the feasibility study, which DOT was working on, on option two, the 135-foot high-rise. These are two renderings provided by the developer. You can see the 135-foot in relation to the existing Cape Fear Memorial Bridge, and the right picture there shows the multi-use path. Some general overview on what the unsolicited proposal had in it. Fully funded by the developer. There's a potential for a bonus allocation, which we'll speak to on the next slide. The assumption of risk is through the NEPA and permitting phase, the design, construction, operation, and maintenance. This is a progressive public-private partnership with a five-year schedule, 50-year tolling Developer responsibilities include going through the planning document, which includes NEPA, design, public outreach, also construction, operations, and maintenance. The team that submitted this is a national caliber design team. They have experience in North Carolina and other coastal areas. The tolling, they stated minimize tolling rates and provide customer service and invoicing Quick note on the bonus allocation, it's a potential, and this is per general statute. This is funding that the WMPO could potentially receive by implementing a toll project. It must be used on projects that's located in the same county. In this case, it's in New Hanover and Brunswick Counties. It's a maximum of $100 million. And if you want to read more on that, you can go to the general statute. Some other frequently asked questions. When did NC DOT receive the proposal? NC DOT received this at the end of 2020. NC DOT reviewed it thoroughly to make sure this was a legitimate proposal. We then met with the WMPO and met with them in closed session in May and then opened session in June. The unsolicited proposal is confidential under state law. And then if this is to move forward, it's got to have full support of the WMPO. And then it still has to go through a competitive bidding process. And NC DOT is not advocating either way on the move forward. This was a decision of the WMPO, and that is per our policies and statute. So is this just an idea? And at this point, it is. The developer came to us with this idea. This project has not been scoped out. It still has to go through a lot of steps that we're going to talk about in a few minutes, and it still has to go through a competitive bidding process. The submitter of the unsolicited proposal will be automatically shortlisted for further review, but they are not necessarily will be chosen as the chosen developer. So how does this move forward from here? And this goes back to the WMPO. They will need to support this idea and then to move forward, and then the WMPO and the NC DOT would work closely together. If the WMPO, any part of this whole process, if they decide not to pursue it, then NC DOT would deny this proposal. Potential benefits of the public-private partnership, it's fully funded from inception. The replacement schedule would be advanced, and once it's built, the maintenance responsibility falls to the developer. Other things to consider with this partnership, the public acceptance of tolling, the unknown toll rates during planning, and frequent collaboration between community, state, and private partners and what we're doing here this evening. How much will the toll rates be? The developer submitted us a toll rate, but that is highly confidential at this point. If we were to move forward, one of the first steps is to do a traffic revenue study, and this allows us to study, it can better define what a toll rate could be, a range, and it also lets us know at what point would drivers start looking at taking other routes. And the final toll rates, the main thing to come from this, are not known until all bids are received, once it goes through the competitive bidding process. Here's kind of a snapshot of the timeline for the next two years. Three major steps here. We're in step one here this evening. Basically, at the next MPO meeting, whether or not they'll support this idea. The next big point here is starting a traffic and revenue study, and then a lot of public involvement. And then there's some potential legislative actions that may or may not need to be taken. Step two is getting into scoping of this project, getting into the planning environmental document, which we call NEPA, and then getting into preliminary design and design criteria to get ready for advertisement, short list, and a selection of best value proposal. At any point during all these steps, and there's a lot of other steps that's not mentioned on this, this can be denied. A lot of steps. And WMPO will be highly involved in all these steps. What are the next steps? Once again, going back to the resolution of support from WMPO, the traffic and revenue study, public input, and deciding or not to move to the next step. And now I'll take any questions.
Mr. Barnett?
Mr. Combs, I know that this has been marched out. This is probably about the fourth or fifth time I've heard this, and I see a lot of comment, emails, comments, most negative regarding tolling. I want to go back and ask some questions kind of leading up to where we are with this unsolicited proposal. The bridge counts that we saw tonight that are showing somewhere around 81,000, 82,000 cars a day in 2045, I believe.
Yes, sir.
Is that the correct year? Are the estimates that were placed on Cape Fear Memorial Bridge 10, 12, 20 years ago, are they consistent with the actual counts that are on the bridge today? That may be, that may not be a fair question, but what I'm driving at, we're estimating 81, 82,000 cars a day by 2045. That's 20 years away plus. And with what we've seen in the last 10 years in Brunswick County, this county, north-south travel, I'm often confused as to, do we think that's an accurate statement? I know it's kind of a shot in the dark, but you have to base it on something.
So when we did the feasibility study, we actually did a brand-new traffic forecast at this site. So this traffic forecast is probably about two years old right now, so it's pretty accurate. You know, we can, you know, as you go into the next steps, you know, we would probably continue doing traffic forecasts, but I would say that 82,000 is pretty accurate at this point for 2045.
Okay. The work that the MPO and the DOT did several years back, Neil Anderson and I were on that at MPO board, and we looked, I think there were, all total, there were about 11 or 12 alternatives that we looked at and vetted, prices, routes, impacts on neighborhoods, communities, the environment. And the number of a billion dollars was tossed around kind of freely, and I knew that there was some deviation from alternate one to alternate 12 or whatever, but the term, the figure of billion dollars was not, was not just tossed out there willy-nilly. It was fairly accurate. Is that a fair statement?
Correct. Those estimates were done at the time when they developed those alternatives, so those estimates would probably be much higher today.
Okay. And I've heard people say that we just walked away from that and scrapped it, but was that, did that number have a great deal to do with walking away from that concept, those concepts, in addition to the financial problems that the DOT had? Is that the real reason?
So yes, we, you know, the Cape Fear Crossing, we knew, as we're talking tonight, that there was, there was no way in the 10 years that DOT would be able to fund that project. So that was the main reason why that project was paused.
Okay. So along comes this unsolicited proposal, and I think that if you took a poll out there, I think by and large, the traveling public would do anything to keep from having another elevator. I just, I just think that because it's always been kind of a, you know, everybody around us has a high-level bridge, we don't. So when I look at the 135-foot span and the price tag is $245 million, that's a third, less than a third of, you know, projected as to what we were planning on or what was told it was going to cost to do Cape Fear Crossing and some of those other alternatives. And, you know, it's kind of like, I'm in the real estate business, and if I've got a property listed for a million dollars and a guy comes up and offers me 300,000 for it, I have to present that offer. It's state law. And I think a lot of people think, or they've been misled to think that this is something that the DOT has come up with, that you're trying to get us to sell to everybody, and it's just not the case. If you've got another one six weeks from now, I would expect that you would march that one out to us also. Is that right?
That's right. You know, if it meets, like I said, if it meets, you know, the general statutes and our policies, yes, this is the route we have to take on any unsolicited proposal.
Okay. The 50-year tolling, is there, you know, for $245 million and probably lots of change orders, and it might be $300 million, but the 50-year tolling, if the DOT were able to have a windfall, let's say, is there a prepayment penalty? Could we go ahead and pay that off and do away with the tolling between now and the 50 years?
If you're in the middle of the tolling, are you saying once it's being told?
Yes, sir.
And we come into money, can you pay off that debt? Roger, can you answer that one? This is Roger Rochelle. He's with the North Carolina Turnpike Authority.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question. Good question. Yes, the contract would include provisions for buying out the contract, so to speak. There would be conditions on certain loans that you may have to continue tolling if it were taken over by the DOT or the turnpike authority. But yes, the contract would have provisions. Typically, you would pay a fair market value. That's not an easy determination, but that's what you would pay to buy out the deal.
But you could do that and discontinue tolling?
Depends on the bond covenants and how the project is financed.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Rochelle. Going back to the traditional way of building a bridge, approximately how long, in today's dollars and in today's situation we find ourselves in, what is your best estimate, Mr. Combs, as to when Cape Fear Crossing could be placed on our STIP, our State Traffic Improvement Plan?
So all I can see is a 10-year window, you know, because that's how our law is, the way we have to look at things. And, you know, we know right now it will not be in the next 10 years. So, you know, how we look two years from now when we go through the next prioritization process, I don't know until we get there. But we do know our revenues are much lower compared to the cost of work that we have in the program, so it's a challenge.
Okay. And let's just say that, let's just use the number 10 years it gets put on the STIP. After it gets put on the STIP, that doesn't necessarily mean it's funded. Is that right?
So the way it's set up right now, you know, it's based on committed versus non-committed. So only the first six years of that 10-year STIP is considered committed, which means it does not go back through the prioritization process. Anything on year seven through 10 has to go through the prioritization process so it can follow off. So you're, you're correct, you know, depending on where it falls in the program, it may not be fully funded.
Yes, sir. At what point in the process, and I think you answered the question on your next-to-last slide, but I'm going to ask it anyway, at no point during this process, if for some reason the MPO decided to move forward with this, is there any point up to and including the bidding process that we could walk away from this and it's over?
Yes, so we can walk away all the way up to when you award the contract.
Okay. And my last question is, if the DOT was considering something, and I don't think we would have met for two and a half or three years with that big number out there floating around and been serious about what we were doing, if there hadn't have been some idea that we could afford that, so if we thought we could afford that, why on God's earth can't we afford $245 million? That's the bottom line of my questions to you. It appears to me that for something that is critical and strategic to this end of North Carolina, that we should be able to get $245 million on that, on our improvement plan and get it funded when we were considering spending six, seven, eight hundred, up to a billion dollars? And I know that wasn't a question, that was just an opinion.
Good comment.
Pardon me?
Good comment.
That's all, Mr. Combs. I appreciate your time.
Chad, I appreciate you coming down here. I've been involved with this crossing issue quite some time, as you well know. And we talked about the Cape Fear Skyway and whatever that happened there. I didn't even really know when that thing kind of went away, but I guess it went away because of environmental issues and cost, and I'm sure there was a lot of issues that made y'all scrap that particular project altogether. But my question is this, are there any other roadways in the state of North Carolina, bridges, roadways of an existing road, it's 51 years of age, that you are in the process or thinking about, or unsolicited bids for tolling on an existing road?
So I'll get to that, but I just want to mention, unsolicited proposal, we don't go out and advertise this.
Chad, I'm not saying anything. You were very clear on that. I'm just asking a pertinent question. Is this the only existing highway in the state of North Carolina that is currently being talked about with an unsolicited bid for a toll project?
As far as I know, yes. Roger, do you know of any other? Okay.
Why? And the reason I'm saying that, we knew about the Cape Fear Skyway in 2003. We understood these traffic projections, and you're right on the money that they were coming at us at this number. Charlie indicated it's 200-some million dollars to replace the span. I also want to ask you, does that include any improvements on the west bank of the Brunswick River in regards to the interchange that would have to be improved also? Because I know you're not just replacing the bridge with a six-lane road without improving an interchange on the west bank there. I would imagine not. I know you guys are pretty sharp. I don't think you guys would miss that one, but is that included in this cost?
So keep in mind that when I say it's a feasibility study, it's a very high-level look.
Understand.
There, with the 135-foot fixed span, there's a potential that it gets into that interchange because of elevation. At the time of the feasibility study, like I said, because of the high-level look, we didn't, at the time, the firm that was doing that did not see any major issues with that existing interchange. So, but once you go into design and start scoping out a project and you start getting more lines on the ground and surveying, then yes, you potentially have to look at that interchange there. It's pretty close.
So you're saying that the 200-some million dollars we're talking about, you're okay with the interchange on the west bank of the river?
We're not saying we're okay with it. Once again, it was a very high-level look. We haven't looked at getting into the minimizing impacts. Right now, it's just basic rough grades, looking where you can tie it down.
On projects that are 10 years, when we're looking at this step going forward, are you telling me that any project that's over $200 million is going to be looked at as an existing toll facility for the state of North Carolina?
No, sir.
Just this one, maybe?
Once again, all of our projects, and even the Cape Fear Memorial, will continue to be put on to this prioritization process. We will continue to get funded our traditional ways. This proposal came to us without asking for it.
Chad, I'm not blaming the MPO, I'm not blaming you, Chad, and I'm not blaming anybody. I understand these people came forward and are asking to put a toll facility... I understand these people came forward and are asking to put a toll facility on this bridge to build it faster. I get that, I understand that. I'm just wondering why we have an existing roadway that is being thought about when we've known about this project and we've known about this bridge and the condition of the bridge and the condition of the traffic for years, and yet no preparation has been made for the replacement of this bridge. We've got 200 some million dollars for the Hampstead Bypass, and I know it took for a long time, but we've also known that that needed to be done. We've got a replacement bridge up in the Outer Banks with the Bonner Bridge that is being done without tolling. But this particular bridge now all of a sudden is being looked at. So my question is, the company that is soliciting this unsolicited bid that is coming before y'all, who owns them? Is it a hedge fund? Is it, is it a company from Europe? Who is it? I, I don't know that.
It's confidential, I cannot.
We don't know that.
Yeah, I cannot tell you who it is.
Okay. And you can't tell me the, 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 the number as far as what the crossing would be? Because that's, that's, that's confidential information. And the only, and I'm asking this question is, I've looked, I just looked on my phone to take a look at some of the bridge crossings in this country, and they're averaging between four to six dollars a crossing. If you go up to the New York area, Tappan Zee Bridge, and some of the bigger ones are about $15, $12. So I would imagine that the range will be between four to six, seven dollars a, a crossing.
So right now, we don't, we don't have a range, that Traffic and Revenue Study that I talked to earlier, that would be your first step to see what that range could possibly be.
So the bridge has got some life left, maybe 10 to 20 years is what you're telling me. At the end of the 10, 20-year cycle, let's just say we don't do this particular tolling project, what happens then?
We'll continue to maintain the bridge.
Okay.
So we'll just continue, those frequencies of those major rehab projects will continue to increase over time. So instead of every 10 years, it may drop down to eight years, drop down to six years, you know, just continue to increase on maintenance costs.
So let me ask you, I know that this federal government is talking about, you know, a trillion-dollar infrastructure bill in Congress, whether it goes through or not, who knows? Do you see any option there in, of being able to obtain some money for the state of North Carolina for infrastructure projects here in North Carolina? And more importantly, a major infrastructure project here in southeast of North Carolina?
So we currently have a, a group with NC DOT that works with our federal officials, and they, you know, they are working on that. And until that bill is actually passed, then we'll know. But, you know, as you're going through, if you're going through these steps, if WMPO decides to move on to the next step, and there is an infrastructure bill that comes in and identifies this bridge, then we can still look at utilizing those funds.
As far as you know, maybe Mike knows, is there any attempt at the state legislative level, and I'm talking about the House and the Senate and the governor's office, to do anything in respect, in respect to transportation funding? We've been talking about transportation funding since the Mike Geesley administration. Every administration rolls out some recommendations as what we can do for transportation funding. We know that cars are becoming more efficient, there's less money coming into the funding for Department of Transportation. We had a million people that came into the state last 10 years. We have a million people projected for the next 10 years. So we have more population coming into the state, but your transportation dollars continue to dwindle. And I know this is a problem for, for not only you, Chad, but for the entire state. Is there any, any relief coming from Raleigh to take on this, this mammoth problem that we're having in transportation, not only in southeast of North Carolina, but throughout this state? Do you see anything on the horizon? Do you see any courage of anybody up there trying to make tough decisions for this state?
And I cannot speak for this session here on legislation. You know, we, we do have that same team that works with our federal partners, but that same team works with our state legislators. You know, NC DOT did, they did this first commission to try to identify other areas for revenues, and that was passed on to legislation. But as progress they're making this year, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, you can't speak to that.
Mike, you got any?
Nobody has any idea on that one. This is going to be a six-lane bridge, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I guess my concern is, it, it pretty much terminates at Fifth Street, is what I've been told. Mike shared that with me, I've heard some of your commentary. I mean, this is, we got some pretty significant neigh, I mean, we've got some neighborhoods up in that area, some marginalized neighborhoods, some underserved communities up there. Do you, I mean, when y'all were looking at this and thinking about this, is that going to be part of your evaluation process? Because I don't see it deviating going toward the state ports where a lot of the truck traffic will go. And I know that you will do something with an off-ramp there on Front Street. But what, what, what do we do with those neighborhoods? How are we going to handle that? Are we going to buy all those properties? Or, I mean, how does that work?
So, you know, right now, we go back to the feasibility study, because, you know, I can't speak to, to the unsolicited proposal. But, you know, we showed the 65-foot kind of tying in the Third Street, it minimized the impacts. 135-foot came in about Fifth Street. But once again, it's very high-level. We hadn't started the process of really getting into the surveying. And we will continue to minimize impacts as you go through that process. If we were funded in the traditional sense, let's say it gets into prioritization, then all those steps would be taken. They would still be taken in this unsolicited proposal as we go through those three steps that we showed you, scoping it out, designing it out. There's just a lot of steps between here and there. And then any right-of-way, once that time comes, it goes through our state and federal laws on a quiet right-of-way.
Okay. This is, I think the impact to the city of Wilmington and the city of residents is going to be greater than anybody in Brunswick County. Remember, when you cross the Memorial Bridge to get into Leland, it's about three and a half to four miles, am I correct? And so the impacts to this side of the river, to the east side of the river, is much greater than anything that they can see, that you don't get, it's a highway getting there. So I would imagine if I'm coming in from Leland, and we know we have a lot of residents that live in Leland that work here in Wilmington, and they want to come into the city to go to work where a lot of the major employers are, and I don't want to pay that toll, and I'm going to anticipate that it's between four to six dollars, then I'm going to use the Isabel Holmes Bridge. That means a lot of that traffic is going to go through Miranda, through the city to get to where they need to go. That puts a lot of traffic impacts on this side of the river. In addition to that, half of the population base, almost half of the population base for this county runs from Third Street down to Curie Beach, comes up 421 South. So I could imagine those folks, if they want to avoid paying the toll, then have to try to get through the city, go down Third Street, 16, 17 Street, whatever, to get to the Isabel Holmes Bridge. So it puts a tremendous amount of impact on other parts of our community, not just Dawson and Worcester, but also Third Street, the Historic District, the downtown area. And so I have a significant concern about that, that I would hope that you would evaluate thoroughly, because those traffic impact that, that we will feel as a community need to be shared with the residents when we're, we're talking about this. And then I would hope, Chad, that you would, what I'm concerned about from the WMPO, and nothing, and I've got two members here tonight, is that once they vote on this, and if they move forward with this proposal, this unsolicited proposal, that the state legislature will look at and say, oh, we don't have to worry about Wilmington replacing that bridge, they're going for the, for this particular tolling process. And they just pretty much drop any kind of proposed or public proposal to replace that bridge with public money, state money. I'm a state taxpayer like everybody in this room, and I would like to have my state tax dollars for transportation come back to my area instead of me having to pay for it. That's just an opinion I have here locally. But I just think that the impacts, the traffic impacts are going to be significant on the east bank of the river as opposed to the west bank. They, they get their off-ramps there in Leland, they come over here, it's four miles, and they can easily take that route and get over to the Isabel Holmes Bridge. So that's a pretty serious concern that I have. So, you know, I would just hope that you can promise me this, I think you can, that you will continue, or the WMPO will continue to go for the public option. I know you have to look at this unsolicited bid, but I've already got a, a, I've got another tolling company that's, 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 for some reason, has reached out to me, because I guess they want to build a competitive bid here. So all of a sudden now, we've got these tolling companies that are thinking about coming here to replace the Memorial Bridge, and they want to jump on board too. I, I just, I know what we've been through with, with the Skyway, and I know in many ways why it died, but we also knew that this was coming, and it seems like we really haven't prepared for it. And that's not your fault, Chad, that's another issue in regards to revenue that needs to be generated at the state level. But I think that we could have done a better job in getting this bridge replaced. And even if we went with a fixed span like we have with the Memorial and replaced just the fixed span just the way it is, if the bridge is, is that, is costing you that kind of money, you, you still, you'd come out cheaper by just replacing it as opposed to maybe going with what you're talking about now. So that's just some of my comments, but I'm, I'm, I'm disappointed to be frank with you. Yes, sir, Mr. Danners.
As I recall, I mean, just to clarify, I think, as I recall, at the end, the Skyway was one of the few toll bridges, I mean, there was one up in the, a couple, there were a couple of projects that the state had agreed to let be told, as I recall, but that neither here nor there. Let me ask a question about, I think I asked you this once before, but had we, and, and I guess what's, what we're really finding out here is, what we already knew, but what the, the citizens and other folks that don't serve on NPO didn't know is, we were just nowhere near on this thing. I mean, it's, it's 20, 30 years away? Twenty, for sure. I mean, I don't know about for sure, Chad would say not for sure, but I will. Where does it, you know, when you do the scoring and the buckets of money, is it because of the port, is it a statewide, or is it a region, or how, where would it fall?
It was, it could compete in, I believe, all three categories in this case. So it could come out statewide and regional for sure. I'd have to look at the.
And how is it, how does it, how is it scored, or how is it ranked when we've done these, when they've done?
So it's all data-driven, you know.
I understand, but what's the data say?
So data, you know, the data, you got congestion, you got freight, you know, safety, there's a lot of different, a lot of different data on that.
But I mean, does it rank? There are 25 projects, 400 projects in front of it, where, where's, where's it ranked?
So we haven't gone through a round of prioritization, that's what we're doing now. So we don't know what's competing against it yet. We, we have just now submitted projects into that round 6.0. There has not been any scoring on this round yet.
You know, I don't, I don't know the order of events, but we discussed at one point, you know, the, the significant cost of this and looking at the businesses upriver that need X number of height, you know, whether it was 65, and I can't remember which one, I think the tallest one was 65. They needed 65.
135 is the tallest.
135.
Yes.
And we had discussed, well, and I've heard of this down at other places, it being cheaper just to, to buy, you know, to help them buy land south of it somewhere and move. It's done all the time, you know, because then you, then you don't need the bridge, you don't need, the bridge is, is not, doesn't have to be as, as tall. And you, and you said, well, we will look into that. But when, when does that, that's way down the road, once you get prioritized and you start comparing costs and all that, is that where that happens?
It would have actually been pretty much in that step two that we showed you on next step. When you go through the NEPA process, those areas will be identified. You know, you're also working with the various agencies such as the Coast Guard, and you would have those conversations during that planning document.
Right. Okay. The, I don't, we had, I did it by Zoom, I came to almost every meeting in person, so it must have been during, maybe April, maybe it was, we had someone from the DOT here, because I was out of town. But a lady, as I recall, gave a presentation on, you know, this big new plan they were giving for the legislature for, you know, new ways to collect funds at the DOT. And I was, I was kind of, I was laughing at it, because I, I, I just, that's the issue here. I mean, really, that's the major one, that's got to get figured out, and it just seems to be going nowhere in terms of how, how do we, how do we raise more funds to, for infrastructure? And it's, you know, it's been with the gas tax and it hadn't changed, and Bill already alluded to the, all the, you know, improve, you know, whether it's electric cars or higher gas mileage and all that. And then we've had, we have the storms, and we have the, the projects that go over, and we've had the lawsuits, et cetera. But we're just, we're really just nowhere, and that's the only thing that makes me kind of, I'd like to know a couple things, or I'd like to, maybe Mike could prepare it more, you could work with him to kind of, I saw your little, whatever you call it, time horizon, or whatever we want to call that, but, you know, I, I'm, at first glance, this just doesn't, isn't appealing at all to me, but I'd like to, I would like, I guess you don't find out the actual toll amount until you have that competitive bidding process, right?
Yes, but once again, I go back to that Traffic and Revenue Study will give you a pretty good range of where it should be.
So that would happen prior to that?
That's one of your first steps, right off the bat.
And then one of those first steps, as I recall, would also be the traffic study, kind of see how the traffic disperses.
That's right.
So and how it would impact.
Yes, sir.
Downtown and, and so on. So it's, it's, I mean, that's, that's just like the two, you know, I hear everybody kind of laugh at it, you know, but that's, that's the two questions everybody has, you know, what's, what's, what's it going to cost? You know, nobody, we don't know. Bill's, you know, done his homework and probably right, but, you know, I'd love to know what's it going to cost, two, you know, what's it look like when the traffic disperses? Because, because of it, you know, I, you know, I travel to Norfolk and Virginia Beach a lot, and I, I just, we've already kind of gone, we're going through a paradigm shift. I don't travel across town as much like I did 10 years ago, you know, try to kind of get my little area, go to the grocery store, it's what Glenn's been talking about for years, you know, your, your pod or whatever, where you try, where you do most of your commerce. But when I'm going through up there, the traffic is so bad, and I'm worried we're going to be there before we know it, you know, maybe, you know, I might be an old man, but, you know, that's not too far away. But it, you know, we're going to have that situation where I just look for, I've got all the things stuck on my car, and I'm just trying to get home, and it's, you know, whichever way it tells me to go, is this toll, that toll? It's, it's, it just, it's a different mindset. We don't have that here. I mean, I, I don't want, yet, I don't want it, but it may just be coming. And so, you know, where you're just trying to get somewhere and what the cost is, is kind of a, I never, I hate tolls. I mean, I never, I never dreamed we'd even have them, but when I go to Raleigh, sometimes through south, what's it called, the south, you know, below Holly Springs, take that thing, because there's a traffic jam, you can't get through Raleigh with all the construction and wrecks. Do I want to pay it? No. But I want to get, I want to get there in three, two hours, not four. So it's, it's just, I wonder if that, back to Charlie's point about the 80,000 cars, if it's not going to be 100,000, that's kind of what it feels like to me. My, my questions didn't have any very good, weren't in very good order, so they don't make a lot of sense, but, but I think I hit on all of them, thanks.
Hey, Chad, real quick, I know that we've been talking with you folks with the rail realignment. I know that we all have a concern with the growth of the port, and I know that 95% of the containers that are being moved out of the Port of Wilmington being moved out by truck. And one of the things was, with this rail realignment, was hopefully to get it back over to the bridge. I would, if, obviously, in WMPO, if they move forward with this, are going to have to hopefully study attaching some rail to this bridge for us to be able to help the port. I know the port is part of the Department of Transportation, but I would imagine that y'all have a concern like we do, because if all that traffic is coming down Front Street, we've got a lot of redevelopment that's taking place there, good stuff that's happening with residents and shops and restaurants, and it's a, it's a vibrant part of the community. And, you know, depending on the rail realignment, the truck traffic is going to increase dramatically because the port is increasing with its container traffic. That really puts a damper on that end of our community. I know you're not going to put it on Third Street, but I know Front Street is going to be definitely impacted dramatically if we don't have a rail realignment. And then the other thing, to Neil's point, you know, if you can re, if you can move some of, like Kendall Morgan has a big chemical facility there upriver. I know that we have other chemical and facilities upriver on the 421 corridor, and they, we've run water, where the county's run water and sewer, Cape Fear Public Utility off that corridor, hopefully to spur economic development and manufacturing growth. A lot of that was in the past, when COSA and, not DuPont, but Hercules was up there, they had ships that would come up there and bring goods and service, bring services and goods there. You know, I think that if, if you do do a fixed span, and you cut that part of the river off for any kind of potential ship traffic, I think it would hurt the values of, not the property, but what we're trying to do on that corridor, which is the industrial corridor for all of New Hanover County. And then to Neil's point about moving it south, I can tell you that when we just tried to reopen up an existing facility called National Gypsum, there was a lot of blowback, and I can't imagine moving a chemical facility south of Wilmington. I would like to find the elected officials, and I'd have to take that one on. I would like to find the elected officials that I have to take that one on to move it south of Wilmington in any part of the southern part of the county or even downriver in Brunswick County. I think it would be a very, it would be a serious challenge for anybody to do that. Just my comments. Mr. Grady.
Chad, first of all, I just want to say I'm not trying to kill the messenger here. I know this is not your plan. In fact, you've shown us some plans that are very sensitive to the needs of the city. You showed us a plan where you kept the bridge within the existing right of way so that the neighborhoods on this side of the river would not be disturbed even by the new bridge. And I, I, I really appreciate that you did that. This plan looks like Robin Moses has come back to life. They want to plow this road right through one of the lower income areas of our city, the areas we're trying to revive with affordable housing and no regard for it. And why wouldn't they? They don't live here. They don't know where they're going, they're going through it. So this is a nonstarter for me to think that that bridge is going to go through those neighborhoods. And you, you need to tell the bidders that because it's not going to work. We're not going to allow it. The second thing is what it says about Wilmington. One of the best small cities in the country, we get awards all the time. And now when we need a bridge, the state says, pay for it yourself. Why is that? Charlotte doesn't have to pay for their bridges. Raleigh doesn't have to pay for their roads. The whole state pays for it. We pay for those roads. And now we need a bridge. We desperately needed it for a long time. It's not a surprise. And we're being told, well, you guys pay for it. That's saying it's down east. We don't need to care about down east. So you go back and tell the people in Raleigh, we're not down east anymore.
I don't think that, I don't think that's what the state's saying, Kevin. I think the state is, they get to a threshold in their financial wherewithal and they have to stop letting contracts. They have to stop this. They had the MAP Act. They had Hurricane Florence. They were replacing great stretches of roads and bridges. And at the same time, revenue was not on the, on the, on the rise. It was a perfect storm. So I think that we'll still be in line for traditional financing. If, if these unsolicited proposals go away, we're still going to have to be in some kind of queue. But my problem with that is it's just going to take some blame along and we sorely need that bridge now. And I don't know that, I'm not saying that this is the cure all. But I do know, in having spoken to some engineers that do highway and bridge construction, not here, but in Florida, that this is not going to make anybody feel any better, but this is becoming the way that things like this, dams and bridges and stuff like this are done worldwide because they're just so expensive. So I don't like it. You know, toll, if the toll was fifty cent, it'd be one thing, but it won't.
And of course, the first toll wasn't a road that was needed in Raleigh because they wouldn't stand for it.
Well, and the other thing is too, this is an existing road. I don't have a problem with a new highway or a new bridge. We always knew that the Skyway would be a new facility and it would be toll. No problem. We understood it. But an existing fifty-one year road, that's a slap in the face of the citizens of Wilmington in this area. And I just, I understand you have to look at it. You'll have to do your job, but I just think it's, it's not the right thing. And plus, this just didn't, this just didn't happen today. We've been knowing about this for twenty years. But other communities, parts of this area have gotten road projects that we have not. And I'll be frank with you, I've had some tussles with some people on the West Side and they told me absolutely not when the I-140 connector was going to go through. Would we ever toll an existing road? They would never support it. And here they are thinking about supporting one for, for this area? I'm a little surprised by that, by those comments.
Chad, thanks for being here this evening. I'm sure it's not easy. I just want to say, to echo the mayor and some other concerns that if the MPO would decide to go forward with this, I think that that would mean that the state would probably turn their back on us and wouldn't, would then say, okay, let them, let them do it, let them pay for it, let them toll it. And I think that that's, that's a mistake. And there are other places, we go, you know, to other states, other places, roads are amazing, bridges are amazing. So it has a lot to do with your legislators for the public. Just be careful who you vote for and elect because that's how decisions are made. But I think also you made some of your choices there were the sixty-five foot span with the rail. And of course, there's no hundred and thirty-five foot span with the rail. And, and I get that that might, engineering wise, might not be possible. But you could have a rail that maybe comes up or does something like upriver does. I, I think that the rail realignment is vitally important to the future of Wilmington. And it's not just a safety issue. It's not just a commerce issue. It's, it is a, a multi-pronged issue for the city of Wilmington. And, you know, so I think whatever is done has to include that. It has to include rail realignment. I don't mind paying a toll. I don't. It's too bad we can't have a one-way toll coming into the city instead of coming in and out of the city. And maybe, I don't know, it's probably never been done, but since we have the Isabel Holmes Bridge of dividing the toll and tolling both of them for half the price, so people would have to go one way or the other. I don't know, but it sounds to me like it's not going to be a viable option because public money should pay for this and it should pay for it sooner than later. Because if something happens to that bridge and the infrastructure fails, there's, it's not going to be just a matter of finger pointing.
Thank you too, Chad, for showing up. You mentioned that people could just walk away at any time. Elaborate on that for me.
Yeah, so you want me to explain that? So as you're going through the steps, and even at this point, if the MPO decides not to move forward with it, then we would just deny the unsolicited proposal. There's no more conversation on this. You could be in the traffic and revenue study and let's say you got a range of a toll from, I'm just going to throw this number out. I don't even want to do it. Let's say the range is too high for anybody to accept, then we can just deny the unsolicited proposal and it's over. So as you go through all those steps, as you get into scoping, you know, you can look at the impacts, you can deny it. But you can continue to deny it up to when you award the contract.
Okay, but once, but once it's awarded, then you have to go through it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Once it's accepted and awarded.
Okay, and I concur with my colleagues. We do want you to consider the neighborhoods that you're putting these streets or not putting these streets through. That's really critical. And that's it. Thank you.
That's all.
Chad, real quick, you know, I'm going to show my age, but there used to be a television program called Let's Make a Deal. I don't know if you remember, but Let's Make a Deal was Curtain One, Curtain Two, and Curtain Three. And I guess my, my ask is this, when does the public get to see behind the curtain as to what the toll is going to be? Is it going to be right before the bid is accepted? How do we know, like, we're going to go down this road, we're going to evaluate this unsolicited bid? You folks thinks it's a good thing, WMPO thinks it's a good thing. When does the public really get to see what the cost will be?
I'm going to let Roger, since he's got past experience with this, walk through that so it'll be nice and clear.
Thank you for the question. So the toll rate is contingent on a number of unknown factors at this point. How high is the bridge going to be, which affects the cost, which in turn will affect the toll rates, right? It depends on the plan of finance. Is someone using their own private equity to fund the project? Or are they going after a low interest USDOT TIFI loan as an example? So all of these factors that will work out during the process will inform the actual toll rate. And so if you have a developer that takes one approach to the plan of finance or takes one approach to the long-term maintenance of the bridge, it could be a very different toll rate than another developer that has a very different plan of finance. So determine the actual toll rate, you determine the, the best value proposal and then you know what the toll rates are. This is what's happened on I-77 north of Charlotte. That's a little bit more complex in that those tolls vary based on congestion. On this project, we wouldn't anticipate that being, that occurring. However, the first indication we'll have is when we complete a traffic and revenue study. That will inform that as a public entity, what do we project? Not only how many transactions will occur, what traffic will take the bridge, on what days, weekdays, weekends, so forth. But it will also project a toll rate or a range of toll rates. So we'll have a better idea when that study is completed.
So Roger, since this is a competitive process and I'm sure that the company is putting this unsolicited bid, doesn't want their competitors to know what they're going to be tolling. When, and all of that information is then evaluated and assessed, when do we, the public, get to know what the number is? After you've awarded the contract, before you've awarded the contract, a year before the thing is built? Because just like anybody else that's in the public, in the public sphere, I have to tell the taxpayers of this community, when I approve anything, what it's going to cost and how much is you're going to have to pay for it. When do we, as taxpayers of this great state, get to know that number?
Well, I think the DOT, the Turnpike and all the local stakeholders need to work in lockstep partnership. What I'm leading to is that we need to set up a number of off-ramps for a deal like this where we collectively can decide, as Chad mentioned, that we're not going to pursue the project any further. So once we have a best value proposal, we will know what those toll rates are. That could be one off-ramp.
But I'm going to just say this, I'm not speaking for the citizens of this community, but I am speaking for them. Whatever that toll number is, and I'd love to see the newspaper and all the media see it. And they put it out there, you'll know real quickly how this community feels and how the people feel about crossing a bridge and what it's going to cost them. Since we don't know, I just don't know how far into the process that you folks go because I'm sure there's going to be a lot of work to be put into this, a lot of engineering, a lot of study that will go into it. And I can't imagine somebody just walking away. And then what I don't want to see is, oh, we're going to accept this and you have thirty days and this is what it's going to cost. And this place erupts because they're going to be mad as hell on an existing roadway, which from what Chad has told me, we're going to be the first one in the state that's going to have that. So I, I just, I like to know sooner than rather than later. And I don't know with competitive bidding process, how that works. When do we know? I mean, is it six months before the project's complete? I just, I understand you have a lot of variables to evaluate and I, and I get that. I just want to know when we get to see what the number is.
Once a successful developer is selected.
So if you decide on this particular developer, we will know, if you say this is the guy, these are the group that we want and we're going to move forward with this, then we will know immediately?
We, we could. We could set the contract up. There are a number of contract mechanisms that we could employ as well, all of which have other implications. For instance, I was asked at a recent meeting, could you put a cap on the toll rate for the first ten years or the first twenty years? Yes, you could. It may have unintended consequences in terms of perhaps if we do that, they can't fund the entire project. So there's a number of levers that affect one another. But there are contract mechanisms that we could explore as well, again, working with the MPO.
So the Turnpike Authority then is going to run, run this?
The Turnpike Authority will run the traffic and revenue study if the MPO decides to move forward.
And then the Department of Transportation will have what say in it?
The DOT and the Turnpike, as we do with all of our toll projects, work hand in hand on the projects.
And so I understand, and this is just rumor, I don't know if it's how true it is, but in up on I-77 where they had that big controversy up there, of course, it probably affected the governor's race up there. There was an issue with that the tolling company did not allow any kind of secondary improvement to the roadways. Is that true?
No, it's not true.
Okay.
The DOT maintains ownership and the DOT can make any improvements they can, that.
They can make.
They can make any improvements they want to. There are certain improvements that if they make them, for instance, adding another free or general purpose lane to I-77, then the developer has the right to do their analysis and say, since you did that, it impacted my intended revenue. And therefore, we are claiming that what occurs is a compensation event and you owe us money. The DOT has full rights to do whatever they want on I-77. But there are certain conditions, really primarily adding another general purpose lane to seventy-seven in that stretch of road where the developer could claim that it's impacted the revenue.
So if, for example, DOT wanted to make an improvement to the four twenty-one corridor to get people over the Cameron Bridge or the Isabel Holmes Bridge and it takes tolling numbers off of the Memorial Bridge, they could come back and ask the state to compensate them for the loss of revenue?
All of those details are down the road when the contract's formulated, if the MPO decides to move forward. In other words, in I-77, there's about two pages of contract language that defines exactly what's excluded from the developer being able to claim a compensation.
So their, their attorneys, and I'm sure they would have very good attorneys, could make an argument that any kind of improvement to the four twenty-one corridor that takes any kind of revenue source away from them could be compensated for by the state of North Carolina.
What I'm, what I'm trying to say is that the contract could be written that the DOT reserves all rights to make any improvements to any routes we want to name. And that's the contract, the bidding document, that the bidders would have to conform to.
Understand that, Roger. I know that the Department of Transportation can do that. My bigger concern is the department would probably be reluctant to make any improvements knowing that the fact that they could possibly be sued by this toll operator. And I think that would be something, a scary scenario because of what's happened with the MAP Act, what's happened also with the COVID and the numbers that are down, projections are down. So I just, that's a concern.
As you mentioned, there would be a number of attorneys developed, used to develop the contract. And we would be very explicit as to what's permitted and not permitted under a compensation event to the developer. And if we want to say that the DOT, there are no exclusions, we can do whatever we want on any route, then we could put that in the contract that they sign.
Mr. Spears.
Maybe it's just me, but I'm hoping that the MPO does, they do diligence and we don't even get to this point. You just sitting here taking it all in and it's, it's mind blowing that we've already considered, you know, we factored in that the MPO will go ahead with this public-private partnership that is basically a slap in the face to the citizens of Wilmington. And, and we're okay with it, like, we're just going to, we're just going to go with it. I think we need to put the burden back on the MPO. Like, we, we don't want this. And, and, you know, I'm, I hear Neil talk about the ability to pay a toll. What about the folks who don't have the ability to pay a toll? What about the folks who don't want to be relocated because some new concrete bridge is coming across the Cape Fear and they have to be relocated because we know we're at a place now where, where are those people going to go? Where are they going to go? They can't, where are they going to afford homes? They're not going to live here anymore. So I'm, I'm just hoping that before we jump the gun and settle, and that, this is not a knock on you guys, thanks for the presentation and the information. I'm just hoping that we don't react too prematurely, that this responsibility falls on the MPO and, you know, factor in these things. Yeah, we need a bridge, but at what cost? Pun intended.
Mr. Mr. Rambo.
Mr. Spears, this is exactly why Chad Kimes has come before this body tonight. He's been before the county commission. If I'm not mistaken, I think you've been, he's been at some of the other governmental entities marching this out. And I, I hear you loud and clear and that's the real reason why that was done. So you wouldn't get it from the news media and directly from the horse's mouths. So I hear, I hear you. I'm sure that Neil hears you and we have our next meeting of the MPO. I don't know if it'll be on our, our next agenda, most likely will be. But from, from everything that I, that I've heard and I watched the county presentation, the questions that are asked cannot be fully. the questions that are asked cannot be fully answered until such time as that feasibility study was done. But if, if, if somebody is just dead-set against any kind of tolling at all, then, then it's moot point. And, and it will not go forward. I, I don't know. I don't, I can't speak for the other 10 or 11 members of the MPO, but when we get back together, we'll hear cumulative comments that they've received from their elected body. And Neil and I just represent this council on the Metropolitan Planning Organization.
Yeah, we have two votes. So the county has two votes. There's, I don't know how many are on there, 11, 12.
I want to ask Mike, Mike, just, just curious. If the MPO makes a decision to evaluate this unsolicited proposal, what does that do to us, for us, or how does it affect our ability to continue to look for, for public money from our state for the replacement of the bridge? Does it automatically alert everybody in Raleigh? It doesn't seem to really care that we're going to go with the toll option, the toll option only? Or are we going to continue to fight like hell to try to get money down here for that bridge? From the public, from the, because, because I think if we're sending a message from the WNPO that, that this is what it's going to be, then it, it sets the stage for this thing going down the river as a toll, as a, on an existing roadway. So I just, just give me your comments.
Well, we would continue to look for other funding sources in order to construct this, this replacement bridge. But this does provide an opportunity that I think the board needs to consider and look at and evaluate. Because currently, and Chad, Chad can't talk about it too much, but, you know, I provided some information to the MPO board today about how the situation at the department and, and the cost estimates for the projects that are in the step are, are coming in higher than what they're in program. And so, you know, I think that this would provide another option to look at and evaluate. I think we've got to look at a menu of options and funding choices in order to replace this bridge, as well as build other infrastructure in the state.
I understand that, and, and I respect that. I just want to make certain, and, and this is what I want to hear from Chad and you, are you, I just want to make certain that whatever the WNPO does in the valuation of this unsolicited bid, because I know you folks didn't ask for it, that it does not stop the process of us trying to get money and for us to continue to fight in Raleigh for that money.
Well, and Mayor, I can speak for myself. I will continue to fight for the money, the public money that comes through the State Transportation Improvement Program, and so I will make that commitment to you.
Because I will ask the legislature, I will ask members of the legislature and the governor's offices, if we're the only roadway in the state of North Carolina, existing roadway that's going to be told, I want to know why on other roads in Raleigh and Charlotte and Asheville and Greensboro and Winston-Salem or not.
This is not a question, but I mean, I, we haven't had them in a long, that I recall, you know, these COVID and all that, I should, we haven't had these get-togethers with our legislative, whatever we call it, the entourage of folks that touch on some part of the city. I guess there's one senator, depending on how they've drawn the districts, three or four house members. But, you know, sometimes when we have those, it's just a thank you very much session, and we don't get a whole lot of meat. And, and maybe that's the way, that's the way it goes, but I, if we're not going to ask those, the tough questions in those, in those situations, and, and discuss it and try to understand it better, and hopefully they'll work, work with us to understand it better, you know, that's too bad and shame on us, but hopefully, this shines a light more than anything. Maybe this is a blessing. This thing came along and it's, it's really showing, it's bringing something up, bubbling to the top, to where we're all, all of a sudden, why aren't we getting that bridge? And putting pressure on our legislators and the governor and other people that represent us up there to help us. So shame on us, shame on our press. We ought, we ought to be, you know, have those folks come, talk to us about it, and not Chad, because that's the problem, is the funds.
Chad, thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate all the information you've given us here tonight.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next item in business is the presentation of city policies on naming and renaming of city property, streets and facilities, and placement of private art on city property or right-of-way. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Tom Moten, who's the deputy city manager that will be making the presentation. Tom, well.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protim Haynes and members of the council. Thank you for your time today. This item that we're bringing for you is a process that was initiated with the approval of council in February. So it's a five-month process emphasizing community engagement, listening and hearing from the feedback of constituents that, that you've selected to participate in the process. The focus was on updating our current policies, as well as filling in the gaps in some policy elements that related to the manner in which we name existing facilities, new facilities, rename facilities, streets, bridges, as well as how council going forward wanted to handle matters related to privately owned and funded memorials, works of art on city property or city right-of-way. The Naming Facilities Committee, which members of that group chaired by Councilmember Barnett are here today, met in the beginning, as well as we had a joint meeting of the Governance Committee and Naming Facilities Committee. In addition, approximately 22 persons participated in the community engagement, which included multiple opportunities for feedback in a focus group, one in the beginning to get an idea of, of what are the elements should be considered, identify some blind spots, and then towards the end of the process. Today, we'll have Shelley Grog, who is the project director, as well as Matty Shea, who is the program coordinator. Our intention today is to provide you a quick overview of the policy elements, as well as the process. And then staff will return this item for council's consideration at the August 17th city council meeting. At this time, I turn the floor over to Shelley and Matty, and we'll be happy to answer questions at any point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Moten, for that introduction. Good evening. Thank you for having us today. My name is Matty Shea. I'm here with my colleague Shelley Grog. We are going to spend some time this evening, hopefully about 15 minutes, presenting a brief overview of the policy formation process regarding naming and renaming of streets and facilities. Happy to answer any questions. So we'll be spending, the beginning part of our presentation will just be giving a brief overview of the project scope and timeline. We'll also talk about how the community, as well as the different committees were involved in this process. We'll spend a little bit of time walking through an overview of the policy itself, and then again, we're happy to answer any questions or comments you may have. So the purpose of this policy overall was to provide a clear, consistent, fair, and transparent process for the naming and renaming of streets, buildings, facilities, as well as privately funded pieces of art on public land. So we started off with three main objectives. First, we wanted to research best practices. So this involved seeing what other communities throughout the southeast and the country are doing in regards to these different policies. We also wanted to engage the public, so we conducted several rounds of focus groups with community members who were appointed by you all as council members. And then finally, the ultimate goal was to develop a policy report for street and facility renaming as well. Our project was guided by three main principles. One was engagement, so that was part of the naming facilities committee and the governance committee meetings that we had, as well as the community focus groups. We also wanted this process to be transparent and fair as well. Okay. So when we say naming and renaming streets and facilities, that's kind of shorthand for what this project really encompasses a lot. So this could include stuff like greenways and alleyways, as well as honorific naming. An example of that would be the process you all went through with the Major Joseph General McNeil honorific commem, or commemorative way, excuse me. Again, this policy also includes the placement of private art on public land. So this would be different than art that is commissioned with public dollars, but this would be rather where a group or community group of citizens, they get together, fund a piece of artwork, and say they would like to place it on public land. So this slide up here just gives a brief overview of what all is included in the scope of this policy. And here's just a snapshot of the timeline. So we kicked this off around February. We initially met with the Naming Facilities Committee. We met as a group, and then again with each individual committee member to talk about what sort of research they would like us to do, what they envisioned this policy looking like. We then had a round of community focus groups to get that same sort of feedback. Throughout the process, we were also researching what other communities are doing. And then we drafted a policy. We had another meeting with the Naming Facilities Committee, and then another round of community focus groups. And then finally, back in May, we had a joint meeting with the Governance Committee and the Naming Facilities Committee to review the draft policy so far. And that brings us to our presentation today. So again, one of the major project principles was engagement. So we conducted two rounds of public focus groups. These served as an opportunity to gather feedback and input on the policy as it was being drafted. The focus group members were appointed by council members, listed their names as up on the next slide, and they were not here to direct the project, but rather provide feedback for council's consideration. And then another one of our guiding principles was again transparency. So these focus groups were all publicly available, they were recorded, and I think one, at least one of them was televised on the local public access station. So here's just a quick snapshot of the different community focus group members, as well as if they were able to attend either of the two sessions that we did. I won't go through this, but it's there for your reference. And really what we heard overall from the focus groups was, number one, they wanted this to be a consistent and fair process. When someone wants something to be named or renamed, they just want to have clear understanding of what that process will look like, so it wouldn't be subject to changing whims or times that are changing. They also hope that this would be rare. So no one wants everything to be renamed every couple of years. Naming someone after someone is an honor. So they were hoping that this process would reflect that, and so this would be an infrequent process you would have to go through. And then third, they all agreed that this should include public input. So this would, and Shelley will go through it in a moment, but this would be, reflect, demonstrated public support. It could be commensurate with the size or the prominence of whatever might be proposed to be renamed. So next, I'll turn it over to Shelley to give a brief overview of the policy itself. Thank you. Thanks, Matty, and hello, everyone. So on our next slide here, you'll see that we've got some best practices outlined. Matty mentioned that is a part of our process. We looked at other similar communities and what sort of policies they have around naming and renaming. Some of the things that came up, one was criteria for consideration. So we looked at the criteria that other communities are using to evaluate whether or not something should be named or renamed after an individual or group. The idea of a significant contribution from that individual or group was something that came up frequently and is reflected in this policy. Additionally, a demonstration of public support. So this varied greatly, depending on the community. In some communities, it looked like formal petitions and signatures that needed to be collected. In others, it looked like informal letters of support from civic groups or community members. And in others, they didn't have any specific requirement for local support being required to be demonstrated at all. Cost was another variable that varied across communities. Some had very high application fees, other had low or minimal charges, others required full payment for signage by the applicants. Frequency of naming and renaming, as Matty mentioned, was also something that came up within focus groups and wanting to keep these relatively infrequent and not overburdened council and the Naming Facilities Committee with reviewing these frequently. However, in our review, we did not find other communities that limited the timeframe. Public input was also another area of interest from the focus groups, and so we looked into that a little bit to see what other communities were doing. And we found that folks were generally having public hearings. Some had public comment periods or surveys and mailings to make it a little bit more extensive, the outreach that they were doing. So as Matty mentioned, the last step before we're here today was our joint meeting with the Naming Facilities Committee and the Governance Committee. And so our objective during that meeting was to really review a lot of the information that we've already shared with you here today, walking through the process, talking about the input that we heard from the focus group, as well as the best practices that we'd researched, and then ultimately presenting the draft policy and gathering feedback. So for those of you that were a part of that meeting, you'll notice that we have made some changes on the policy based on our discussion. In particular, some changes to highlight were that we separated the process for renaming facilities from streets. They're very similar, but, and we've called out the differences in this presentation, but in the full policy, they are separated. We've also added a step to clarify who at the city was responsible for managing applications. We've clarified the process for petitions to ensure consistency, and we've also created some new parameters around signage and associated fees. So this is the high-level overview of the process for naming and renaming. Specifically, I'm going to walk through in detail the process for streets on the next couple of slides, but then I'll highlight some of the differences as it applies to So step one is the application process and materials being made available. This will fall to the city's planning and development department. They will also be responsible for answering questions that come up from applicants and directing folks to the resources that they need. Once folks are ready to submit an application, that will be sent to the city clerk. There is a demonstration of local support that's required. The number of signatures depends on the type of request being made for the street. And there's also a number of criteria outlined in the application that folks will have to adhere to when requesting a naming or a renaming. These have to be consistent with city values, and most importantly, the individual or group that's being recommended has to have made a significant contribution, and they need to provide compelling evidence of that contribution. Additionally, there's a $200 application fee at the time of application that's non-refundable. Step three is an initial review by the Naming Facilities Committee. So this happens once every two years at the recommendation of the committees to limit the amount of resources that go to reviewing applications. They will be reviewed based on the criteria that's been outlined in the policy, based on everything that's provided in the application, and those that are determined to be eligible to move forward will then be verified by staff. So in step four, the planning and development team will be responsible for verifying a lot of the information that's submitted on the application, just to make sure that the compelling evidence checks out, that the, there's no concerns from emergency services delivery, those sorts of things. And then the next step, step five, will be that the information is returned back to the committee for further consideration, so the staff will present what they've heard. And if the committee decides to move forward to the next phase, there will be an additional $500 fee at this time to support the costs of public outreach. During the public input phase, public's notice will be given, and there'll be an opportunity for public input, a, a, a community input meeting to gather feedback, a survey will be available for those that are interested in submitting comments. And also during this time, the planning and development staff on behalf of the Naming Facilities Committee meeting, or Naming Facilities Committee, will connect with the council to keep you all informed on the proposals that are moving forward. There will also be, following this, an opportunity for amendments to be made based on the input that's received. And a recommendation ultimately will be made by the committee to council, and then the final vote and adoption will move forward. There will potentially be costs for signage required of the applicant, and there's more details about those and the circumstances of those in the full policy. So as I mentioned, the renaming of facilities follows basically the same pattern, but has a few differences based on the different nature of streets versus facilities. So the main things that I'll highlight here are around the demonstration of local support. Rather than as the streets are required based on the folks, the residents that are on the street and gaining signatures from them, in this proposed policy, facilities, the committee will make a determination of what sort of, what amount of local support is required that is proportional to the size and prominence of the facility that's being requested to be named or renamed. And local support will need to be provided for that proportional area. Additionally, there will be a requirement that the necessary boards will have pre-approved these items or sort of signed off on them before they come to the committee. That way, everybody's looped in that needs to be, and all sorts of potential challenges are addressed far in advance. Additionally, the public notice portion of the process would also have to be proportional to the size and scope and prominence of the facility. But other than that, the process for renaming facilities... But other than that, the process for renaming facilities follows the same flow that we just walked through. And then finally, the last part of this policy is the privately funded memorials. So the proposal is that privately funded memorials will not be allowed to be placed on public land. This is, does not include necessarily existing memorials to be determined at the discretion of council. But it does not preclude the city of placing publicly funded art or memorials on public land or soliciting donations to fund those types of projects. This is based on the feedback that we heard from both the focus groups and the council that they want this policy to be very fair and nonambiguous. And so taking a hard line with, with not allowing them to be placed on public land was the determination in drafting of this policy. So that is the end of our brief overview of the policy. As Tom mentioned, you all will have an opportunity to vote at your next council meeting. So you have some time to digest and review the full policy. But if you have any comments or questions at this time, please let us know.
Does anybody have any comments, questions? Yes, sir, Ms. Anderson.
Sue, this, Tom, maybe, this is not a, this is for honorary streets, not actual streets. That's a separate policy.
Right. This would be for the honorific renaming is what we're suggesting. If there were a street renaming process, it would apply, but there'd be a different standard, meaning change the blade, the mailing address and everything.
And this percentage is higher, isn't it, on the street?
For renaming, I do believe so. I think we set 75%. That was the feedback from the focus group members. They thought the threshold should be at least over what we would generally call a super majority, since it affects everyone. Honorific is what you generally see as a more common practice. It's sort of the balance between recognizing the historical significance of what exists and also trying to utilize more of a contemporary framing of what should be recognized. And so I think there was more preference for honorific than actually changing the names of the streets. But if someone desired, that threshold was going to be substantially higher.
All right. The only thing that, there's still some more steps to this and I can probably make these comments, look at it more and maybe email them, but I just, it's still the vagueness. It talks about demonstration of local support. It says proportional to the size and prominence of the facility to be named.
Right.
If you don't spell out, you know, that in advance, people are going to feel like they're not, you're, you're being subjective. You're being, you're not, they're going to say, well, maybe you're, you're, you're requiring me to jump through more hoops than somebody else. Or why is, I don't know how we do that.
Right.
Off the cuff, but we need to make it so, okay, it's, this equals this many signatures or whatever you got to have to get. If it's, who decides that?
Well.
Wizard of Oz? I mean, it's, you know, I'm saying it's, I mean, you don't want to be the Wizard of Oz. I mean, Tony doesn't do, nobody wants this. I, I don't want to be, well, you need, you know, you need 800 signatures. I mean, I don't know, we need to have that somehow, at least a range or something spelled out for people so they don't feel like they're chasing something different than somebody else had to chase or the fairness, just clarity of some kind. I would just, that'd be my, my advice, because, you know, I don't want to, um, nobody should be put in that spot. It ought to be transparent and out there for, as part of this process. So we can work on that some more, but thanks.
Bill?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, just want to thank you guys from Fountain Works. You did an outstanding job. And I also want to publicly thank the persons who served on the committee, who volunteered the number of hours. Thank you.
Mayor, that concludes our presentation. Oh, yes, sir.
We got some questions here.
This, the signatures, the 75% of residents, what was the percentage before?
Um, I don't remember that offhand.
Kevin, is your mic on? We can't hear you. I'm sorry.
Can't hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
It was 51.
I don't recall. I think it was like majority.
So you go from 51 to 75% and that burden is on the applicant?
Yes, sir. Again, you know, we tapped into the community members to get a sense of what they felt. And there was a general sense that the number to actually change someone's address should be a high threshold.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Okay. All right. We'll revisit that.
There was one other discussion and, you know, it goes to trying to delineate every aspect of a policy before you could, really it's difficult to do. And so we're improving upon what we had. And one of them could be, for instance, a street. Rename a section. It may be a local street. The amount of area of influence in a neighborhood street to be renamed honorifically should be different. That was what the committee discussed. However, a street that may be a mile long, that touches four or five neighborhoods, there should be a greater reflection of support for it. And it may even be beyond just individuals who live on that street because of the nature of the street. And that was similarly with some of the facilities. For instance, a citywide park facility renaming, the people that live around it aren't the only ones impacted by it because it serves a citywide. Conversely, a small neighborhood pocket park where it's less than an acre of land, situated as an enclave within the neighborhood. The notion of having the whole community express support against it may be inappropriate because of the scale and the significance of the community. So I think what I saw from the focus group members was a sensitivity that context matters and that it shouldn't be a unilateral approach to everything being treated the same. They wanted to be equitable, meaning the more prominence or significance of substantive nature of it, the more support should be reflected, the more less substantial in size or scale, then should be appropriate level of support. And that number's going to vary depending upon, for instance, a citywide park like Halliburton versus a neighborhood park that may be a half acre.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Say thank you. I thought we were going on to the next item.
Ms. Anderson?
Well, I too want to echo what Clifford is saying. I was on all of those committees. And we did a lot of this by Zoom and it was a, it was a really, I don't know what the words are, a very energetic interaction between citizens. And everybody had the opportunity to have input. And I was really impressed with Fountain Works and your ability to moderate these really diverse interests throughout our community. And I believe that everyone's voice was heard in, in this. And I think that's not an easy task. And so I just want to say to these gals, and there was another gal too from Fountain Works involved, Shelley or some who?
Julie, Julie Brenman.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Anyway, you, you gals did a, did a great job. It was very professional, very inclusive. And I really appreciate all your hard work in doing it. This definitely represents what the community wanted to see.
Good.
So Tom, this has been unveiled to us tonight. The public should have an opportunity to chime in on this. This is why we're going to delay any kind of a vote until they have an opportunity to tell us what they think about the proposal. And hopefully the community will be engaged and let us know.
Yes, sir, that's correct. And we also went a step farther and sent copies of all the information you received prior to the meeting to all of the focus group members. They particularly said, when will you let us know what you're going to do? And we felt that council would appreciate an opportunity to hear, hear back from those individuals that you appointed to that committee. And also will give you a chance to provide more specific suggestions on how to refine and improve the process, recognizing that we still may have to tweak it down the road again. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, our next item business is a consent agenda. Items 1 through 8. Are there any items that any council member like to hear separately, if not one of the witches of this council?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
3A, 3B, and that's it. So I would move the balance of the consent agenda second.
I'm sorry, Charlie, repeat that. Was it C3?
3A and 3B. I think that's, let me get, Bill, let me pull it up here real quick. I'm sorry.
No.
We're on the consent agenda, didn't know what you're talking about.
C3?
Just give me just one second. I wrote it all down. Yes, ma'am. It is on the public hearings.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I moved 3A and 3B. If they were on the consent agenda, I'd move them.
Do, do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Do we have a motion made, motion made by Councilman Ryan Marks, second one, Councilman Anderson? Any discussion? All in favor of that motion, please in the cave by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that item passes unanimously. That brings us to our public information segment. We have several speakers that have signed up to speak with us this evening. Our first speaker, and Madam Clerk, each speaker's been allocated five minutes, is J.C. Lau, who will be speaking to us about warm incorporated progress update. Ms. Lau, welcome. Oh, she's not here? Okay. Okay, Ms. Lau's not here. Okay, our next speaker is Terry, Terry Lane, who will be speaking to us about reparations, city being responsible to repair injuries to the black community. Is Terry here? Okay. Patrick Barnes, a rezoning Starway Flea Market property. Is Mr. Barnes here? Okay. Our next speaker is Mr. Buck O'Shields. Mr. O'Shields here, Pine Grove Drive and Municipal Golf Course. Yes. Welcome, Mr. O'Shields.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Buck O'Shields. I'm a native born and raised here. I'm here to discuss a safety issue at the Wilmington Municipal Golf Course. I was playing, I've been playing in the Muni for six to seven years, so I've seen it all. But on July, the Tuesday, July the 6th, we were, me and my partner were getting ready to cross Pine Grove Drive. And if you've ever been out there during the day, early morning, you know the traffic's heavy. Anyway, we know the traffic, we can't move till the traffic stops. On this particular morning, we were crossing from number six fairway across to number seven. And we had stopped, I stopped, we stopped at the fence. Both cars had stopped on either side. As I started to cross, a pickup truck came off the right-hand side and went down the right-of-way. And if I'd have been three seconds early, he would have plowed right into my car. I can still see the man's face in that truck. And I can still see the face on the, the two women and the two cars that had stopped. Anyway, there's no marked pedestrian signs there. There are some blinking signs that say Golf Course, I believe that's what it is. This has been a problem for years. And I really think that it is time that we need to, to at least start to solve it. I'm not here to say you need to spend $100,000. And I appreciate the city manager responding to my emails and the assistant city manager. We kind of got them lost for a day or two, but we finally found them and I appreciate it, Mr. Carter, helping me find them. I've talked with Louise McCall, who heads up the study committee for the city on various issues with Steve Bridges. Louise said the city had talked about doing a tunnel. I don't think that's a thing that will happen. We spent how many millions of dollars about five years ago rebuilding that whole golf course. Nothing was mentioned about crossing at that time. If you were going to build a tunnel or dig a tunnel, that would have been the time to do it. But the water table's high, so just from my point of view, I don't believe a tunnel will work. The simplest thing to me right now to begin to put some safety into effect is to have the crossings that go across Pine Grove Drive, there's two of them. And if you play out there, you got to cross that road twice. Anyway, have those crossings marked, just like you would at a school or anything else. And I don't know whether the city would stripe that or whether the state would. And the two signs that are out there that have flashing yellow lights that say Golf Course or whatever, whatever it says, change those to red. Have a new sign made that says pedestrian crossing ahead, caution. Now, people talked about putting stoplight, putting a stoplight out there. I think if you did that, you would, you would create a major mess. But if you haven't been out there during the heavy traffic period now, this is, this is summertime. When school starts up, the, the traffic's going to probably increase about another 30%. And it's unbelievable. Well, there's probably not, if you drive around this town, the number of people that still drive just looking at their phone and texting. So I think now's the time, in my opinion and the opinion of a lot of people out there that play golf at the Muni, to at least take a reasonable step that won't cost a whole lot of money to put something that's a little more in the face of the people driving down that, that road. When school starts, traffic will be backed up all the way around Pine Grove Drive, back to the stoplight and beyond there at, at Holly Tree. To me, the other alternative to that later on is to turn some of that traffic down Holly Tree and get it off of Pine Grove, but that's another story and another day. What I'm here is just asking the city to move forward now, working with the city manager and the assistant city manager. You know, their comments, and I understand the dialogue from them is that they will analyze the situation and report on the problem solutions. To me, I'm offering a simple solution right now that, that takes, makes progress. And that Ms. Beatty and Glenn Harbeck will be looking at the problem and doing the same thing. You're just finishing up a million dollar, multi-million dollar renovation of the clubhouse, which will be spectacular. So we're bringing everything to, to a conclusion. So I think if we can move forward with this simple fix, that that will bring a lot of comfort to a lot of people, not only the golfers, but people traveling down the road. So that's why I'm here. I'm open to any questions or comments.
Mr. Shields, thank you for those comments. I would like to, to, to ask Tony. I know that we've just did some improvements very quickly on Greenville Loop Road. And what Mr. O'Shields is asking for is not unreasonable and it's very, got a lot of good common sense to it. And until we have a much more elaborate system over there that maybe with Hawk Lights and what have you, I think just to do the simple things that he talked about would be a very simple thing. I know we got some good traffic engineers that should be able to put something together very quickly. I don't say very quickly, but probably within the next 30 days. Tony, what do you think?
Yes, sir. We referred this to traffic engineering last week after I finally got Mr. O'Shields's email. And we should have a recommendation back from them easily within 30 days.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shields, the, the truck that came that almost hit you, did it illegally pass the cars that were parking on the right?
Two cars, the cars that stopped, in fact, there were three cars stopped to the left of us. There were three cars stopped to the right and evidently this guy driving this truck wasn't paying attention. So to keep from rear ending those two cars, he swerved over onto the shoulder to go and went right past them and I can still see his face then.
Okay.
You know, doing this.
All right. Thank you. All right. Yeah, okay.
You know, I, I really hope we can get something done or move forward on this in the next short while.
Before that. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Grayden, did you?
I, I, I agree with Mr. O'Shields. We should fix this. But we also should put in the crossings at Market and Twenty-first, which we still haven't done, and at Anne and Third, which we still haven't done. Something out on Sixteenth and Seventeenth to help pedestrians there. Those projects are stuck somewhere in the process, and we need to start protecting pedestrians. So, I appreciate it. This is needed, but all of those other projects that are on the list, and they haven't been done.
I don't have, right off the top of my head, remember the exact dates, but the market at Twenty-first is going through the approval process at NCDOT right now. And it should be implemented, if you use wooden poles, sometime around the first of the year, calendar year. And if you wait on the fabricated metal poles, that'll be about three months later.
Well, this one is a pretty simple fix, because I, we've played that course, and it's, you can, you can do the markings and you can do the signage very quickly, and you can get it up there ASAP. So it's not, and, and I believe that Pine Grove is a city's city-owned road, correct? We don't have to worry about the Department of Transportation. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Haynes?
Mr. O'Shields, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate your being here. I think most of us have been out there and have played and have gotten across the, there. The interesting and sad thing is that the system that's, and I agree with you, we ought to change the lights and do whatever we can do. But it sounds to me as if the systems there did actually work, that the cars that were traveling legally stopped. And what happened is someone was traveling illegally. And so we ought to ask our traffic engineer to do something perhaps on the side to stop people from going around, in addition to what Mr. O'Shields suggests. But we have a good new traffic engineer, and I think he'll come up with something very viable, very workable, and to try to increase safety. So thanks for bringing that to us tonight, and I'm glad you're okay.
Well, let me, let me just say, with no markings there, people, people won't stop for you. They'll, if, if you want to go over there and see what happens, go over there and park in the parking lot at the American Legion Hut and watch the traffic. Because there's nothing there other than that little blinking sign that doesn't mean ditty to them, I'm sorry, it doesn't mean anything to those people driving. There's nothing, they don't see anything on the ground. So that's why I'm saying to me, a simple solution is, or starting a solution, is to mark those crossings and simply change that light to red and put another sign up there that's already wired and everything's going. And, you know, to, to me, and I understand the, the workings and everything of city and county government, but this is something that, in my opinion, and a lot of opinions of a lot of other people out there playing golf, that can be fixed fairly cheaply and assuredly for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we need to do it ASAP, since we have about sixty thousand rounds of golf being played out there, so it's a heavily used course. And a lot of kids. Thank you, Mr. O'Shields.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. And I think we had a last speaker was Laurie, Laurie Webb, who was going to be speaking to us about housing for homeless and Michael Jordan Clinic. And I believe that Mrs. Webb has, was scheduled to speak but has withdrawn. Great. Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, item PH one is an ordinance amending the official zoning maps of the city to rezone property located at eleven twenty-one South Front Street, eleven twelve South Second Street, and one oh one, one oh four, one oh eight, one twelve, one fourteen, one fifteen, and one sixteen, Marstella, from LI Light Industrial District, and R three Central City Residential District to UMX CD Urban Mixed Use District. I will note that the applicant has requested to continue this item to council September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one meeting. We have a motion to continue this item to that specific date?
We continue the item.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Barnett, second by Councilmember Ryan Barx. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Our next item is item PH two, which is an ordinance for the closure of a partially improved right-of-way portion of old Highway Early Road, approximately two hundred and seven feet in length along Early Road. I will announce that this was, item was continued from our council's June fifteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting. And at this time, I'd like to recognize interim city manager, Mr. Tony Cottle, for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council, Mayor Protem. Mr. Jeff Walton with the Planning Department has his presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The applicant proposes to close a partially improved right-of-way portion of Old Highway Early Road, approximately two hundred and seven feet in length along Early Road. The, this section was planted in nineteen twenty-one and ran adjacent to the Wrightsville Beach trolley line for Bradley Creek. This kind of shows you a general location of where this is located, just near Early Gardens along Oleander and Wrightsville and Early Road. The site is located in the nineteen ninety-five annexation area effective January thirty-first, nineteen ninety-nine. These are some of the road, the pictures concerning the closure. As you can see, the, you know, portion is mostly made of concrete. And these are some of the photos adjacent to the site to give you context. The request to close a portion of the unimproved right-of-way is located along the frontage of one oh six and one ten Early Road. The triangle-shaped closure measures two hundred and se- two hundred and seven feet in length and contains point one two of an acre of land. If approved, the closure would add additional street frontage and lot area to the adjacent lots mentioned. The comprehensive plan calls for consideration to be given to the impacts of a right-of-way closure may have on the public street network, including vehicular and pedestrian mobility. Since there is an existing road connections are in place in close proximity, staff leaves requests would not have a, a negative adverse impact on the surrounding street network. The site is also located within the planned boundary of the Wrightsville Sound Small Area Plan. For land use changes, the plan recommends retaining single-family uses. The closure of the right-of-way may allow for redevelopment that is consistent, consistent with the area. Closing this public right-of-way would not impair the surrounding public street network and would not adversely impact neighboring properties. The closure would result in additional street frontage and lot area to the residential lots adjacent, allowing for potential redevelopment. Staff recommends that the existing water and sewer mains, future pedestrian sidewalks and drainage from Early Road be placed within a public drainage utility and pedestrian easement to be recorded upon the street closure. The proposal is consistent with the recommendations to create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the Wrightsville Sound Small Area Plan, and the city strategic plan, and we recommend approval of the request. And the applicant is also here to make a presentation. Okay, I've been answering any questions.
They're gonna make a presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any, any questions for staff? Okay, did a heck of a job. Let's bring on the applicant.
Good evening, members of council and Mayor Saffo. It's my pleasure to represent the two owners that are making this request. As you can see, hopefully, by this slide, the number one is the Old Highway Early Road, which is about nineteen twenty-one. And that was the original access road to Wrightsville Beach. The two properties that are affected are one oh six Early Road and one ten Early Road. And currently, these two properties front on this old section of Early Road, so they do not have direct access other than just, excuse me, just driving to Early Road, which is at the top of the slide. This shows you a slightly larger view of the old Early Road, which is the section, number one, that we're requesting closure on. And number two is West Early Road. And that is a subdivision, a private road subdivision that was developed in nineteen eighty-six. And they included a portion, which is number three. That is a continuation of the old Early Road, which is from nineteen twenty-one. That's a concrete street, as is the area in front of one oh six and one ten Early Road. This just shows you the existing conditions a little closer. This is looking towards, to the right is the existing Early Road. The concrete and the asphalt patch is what currently the property owners are, are fronting on. And that, again, is the old section of Early Road. As you look beyond this site, you're looking at the intersection of Early Road and Oleander Drive. And again, this is an area that would allow these two property owners to front. If this is closed, they would be able to front directly onto the existing Early Road, which they cannot do now. They're actually fronting on the old section of Early Road. Next slide, please. Again, this is the old Early Road looking towards Early Road to, to the north. Again, this area would, what the property owner would like to do is to take this concrete up, clean this area up, which is part of the scenic byway, and would certainly enhance the look of this entrance into Early Road. And so that is the purpose of the request, to close this small triangular shape that would affect two properties. And it would eliminate a section of road that is currently the responsibility of the city of Wilmington. And with that, I request that you approve this request for closure of this section of Early Road.
Thank you, Mr. Capps. Any question for any applicant?
I don't have a question for, for Mr. Capps. I have a question for John.
Okay. Mr. Joy?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
When this was originally brought up, I think I may have thrown a flying the wantment on this. I was, my only concern was, as historically speaking, when we, when the city closes a, a right-of-way, the two property owners on either side of that go to the center line of the street and, and, and get that ownership. In this particular case, we didn't have that. So, so I understand it now. I mean, I, I, I think I do. When this road is closed, one oh six and one ten are gonna gain all of that right-of-way.
Councilmember Ryan Barx, the question you asked was an excellent one. The state law says exactly what you said it does. You go to the center line and the adjacent, that's the key word, the adjacent property owners split it. In this case, we didn't know exactly who was going to get it. Sean Evans with our office had to do a lot of work. He worked with the property owner's attorneys, and what he was able to determine is that their lots way back when went all the way out, and they will both be the adjacent property owners. They will, in effect, take that property. We didn't know that then. We know it now.
So they're, just to be clear, they're taking it its entirety?
Yes.
Okay, so there is no other. And the, the CF, I think there's a utility right-of-way. If you could go back to that slide that showed the, the overhead? Where, where is the, where, go, go back to the one that delineates the, the taking or the?
May I address that?
There you go. Where, where is the, where is, where are the utility right-of-way, Howard?
What, what we have done, I have been in communication with both the engineer with the Cape Fear Public Utilities Authority. He's been out and looked at the site, and we have been, been working with him. And we've also been working with Rob Gordon, the city engineer, on the situation with easements. And what, what the owner is proposing to do, and I've, I've talked to Cape Fear Community, excuse me, Cape Fear Public Utilities, about extending both the clean-out and the water tap, which is in the old right-of-way. We're gonna move it out to the new right-of-way, assuming that this is approved. That is what Cape Fear Public Utility has requested us to do. And then in reference to the storm drainage, we've been working with city engineering department on how to address the storm drainage, which is basically sheet flow from Early Road. And so we are working on that, and we understand we will be submitting a construction plan, a plan that will show where the easements will be for both stormwater and by placing, extending the water and sewer out to the new right-of-way line, we will not have any water and sewer easements. And one, one of the things I did notice in the package that was given to you is that Cape Fear, Cape Fear Public Utilities had indicated there was a water line through this triangle. And I discussed that with the engineer. He came out and looked, and they determined that the water line is actually in the existing road right-of-way. It's not across this triangle. But we're gonna work out those details, assuming that the council recommends or approves this tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Yes, sir. I'm not gonna add much. Just as Mr. Capps indicated, the statute allows the municipality, when you, when a street is closed, to reserve either existing or kind of blanket easements. And we've kind of set that up to do that. The property owner's been cooperative with agreeing to reserve some space for future sidewalk and other easement areas, as well as where, as well as stormwater, as was mentioned.
I have zipped around that curve, but many a time going way too fast.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Capps.
Yeah. Do we need a consistency statement for this?
Okay.
When we get, okay. Any other questions from, from council? Okay, thank you. I would now open the public hearing and ask if anyone in the public wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this item. Okay, has the city clerk received any comments? Okay. And any further questions from council? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council.
I would move the item based on the, what Howard just read into the record about the, the improvements that had been discussed with Cape, city engineering in Cape Fear.
Fair enough. Second.
We have a motion made by, no, we don't have to have a consistent statement. Motion made by Councilman Ryan Barx, second by Councilman Barnett. Discussion.
There's not one for a street closure?
No consistency statement is required for this. It, it doesn't come under the zoning and planning chapter, so none is required.
Right. So we have a motion made by Councilman Ryan Barx, second by Councilman Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading?
Yes.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Haynes, second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first, as well as second reading. That brings us to the next item, which is item PH three, which is an ordinance in the matter of closing a portion of unimproved right-of-way of Central Avenue located between four nineteen Summer Rest Road and the Summer Rest Trail. This time, I'd like to recognize interim city manager, Mr. Tony Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jeff Walton will overview this item as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. The applicant proposes to close a portion of an unimproved right-of-way of Central Avenue located between four nineteen Summer Rest Road and the Summer Rest Trail. To give you a general area of where this is located, it's at the end of Summer Rest Road and near the rail tra- or, excuse me, the county's trail going to the intercoastal in this area. These are some of the existing photos of the right-of-way as shown today. And these are some of the photos adjacent to the site to give you context. The request is to close a portion of unimproved right-of-way of Central Avenue. The right-of-way consists of point one six six of an acre. The partial closure of Central Avenue measures two hundred feet in length and terminates at the Summer Rest Road. The comprehensive plan calls for consideration to be given to the impacts of right-of-way closure may have on the public street network, including both vehicular and pedestrian mobility. Staff believes the requests would not have an adverse effect on the surrounding street network. The site is also located within the Wrightsville Sound Small Area Plan. For land use changes, the plan recommends retaining single-family zoning or use. The closure would allow for redevelopment that is consistent with the land use for the area. Closing the public right-of-way would not impair the surrounding public street network and would not adversely impact neighboring properties. The closure would result in additional street frontage and lot area, allowing for potential redevelopment. Staff does recommend that a public easement be provided at the end of Summer Rest Road to allow for a vehicle turnaround prior to recording. The proposal is consistent with the recommendations to the great Wilmington Comprehensive Plan, the Wrightsville Sound Small Area Plan, and the city strategic plan, and staff recommends approval. And the applicant is also here to make a presentation.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Grayden?
I didn't, is that in here about the turnaround? I don't.
I don't, I don't see that in the ordinance.
It's something that we can't condition onto a street closure. Street closures are pretty much a, an up or down sort of votes. But we do recommend prior to the recording of the closure that the applicant record an easement for turnaround at the, at the end of Summer Rest Road. Sean Evans has been working with the applicant through this process, and I believe we have the easement language resolved, but maybe Sean can explain that further?
Sure, sure, Jeff. No problem. Councilmember O'Grady, that's correct. The landowner has met with officials both from engineering and fire, and they're willing to provide an easement. An easement agreement's been executed, but we're holding it in escrow, and it won't be recorded unless the street closure goes through. But Rob Gordon worked with the applicant and various members of city staff to make sure that would accommodate turning radiuses for emergency vehicles.
So that, that little bubble there, that's the turnaround?
No, that's, that's what's present on the ground now. It's, it's sort of resembles a cul-de-sac, but that's just what's there now. What, what's proposed would extend into, into private property on the left, a little bit above where that is, sort of where the cul-de-sac widens out and go, and go into private property to allow a, a fire truck or another emergency vehicle to, to back in and turn around.
If I may interject, Councilmember O'Grady, you're stealing our thunder on that. We, we don't have it as part of the ordinance because in the applicant's presentation, they are actually going to present it in escrow to the city so that it's ready to file if council chooses to approve this.
So it's all done. Okay.
Any other questions?
All the members of the public.
At this time, I'd like to recognize the applicant.
Good evening. My name's Sam Frank. I'm with Warden Smith. I represent the applicant. You have a heavy agenda this evening. Mr. Walton's report was effective, and to my knowledge, there's no public objection to this matter. So for all three of those reasons, I'm here and interested to answer your questions, but I won't belabor any of the material that's been covered already. I am glad to deliver the easement that was discussed. Mr. O'Grady, if you're interested to see, the last page of this has the exhibit that shows the specific location of the thing.
Just wanted to make sure it was included.
And the city has taken possession of that in escrow at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frank, for that mercy. Okay. That brings us to our public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. Does anybody in the public want to speak on this particular item? There's nobody here. Madam Clerk, have we received any additional comments on it? Okay. Any further questions from, from council? I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. Motion made by Councilmember Spears.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first reading as a motion to waive second reading. Motion made by Councilman Riven Bart, second by Councilmember Spears. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item PH four, which is an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city to rezone property containing 1.56 acres of land located at 6756 Market Street from RB Regional Business and R15 Residential District, CS CD Commercial Services Conditional District to allow for a mini warehousing use. At this time, I'd like to recognize interim city manager, Mr. Tony Carter. And I will also note for the record that whoever makes the motion must read a consistency statement and reasonable statement for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brian Chambers, our senior planner, will overview this item for us.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This site is located on the south side of Market Street between Old Dairy Road and Station Road. Includes a 1.5 acre portion of a 2.8 acre property currently home to the Stevens Hardware. This map shows the site and the context of the surrounding area. Here are some photos of the surface of the property located from Market Street. And then we have some photos from Market Street and then to the rear of the site where the rezoning request is occurring. The site is surrounded by commercial uses to the northeast and west. There are single-family uses located in the south across an unimproved right-of-way. The applicant proposed to rezone just the rear portion of this property to allow for a 5,725 square foot building to be used for mini warehousing. The applicant has agreed to limit their request to the rear portion of the site where this proposed zoning and use would be more appropriate. The Land Development Code allows mini warehousing within our CS, CS district with prescribed conditions. I will note that the applicant did request a variance from the Board of Adjustment for the height to be allowed to be 16 feet. The code requires 12. On May 20th of this year, the Board of Adjustment approved that variance subject to this rezoning Access to the site provided by an existing driveway on Market Street. Traffic indicates, traffic data indicates that Market Street is operating near its design capacity at a level of service of E. However, there are significantly less estimated vehicle trips associated with this request as opposed to build out under the current zoning. The comprehensive plan identifies the site as within a high-density transition area of opportunity, and it's located along a major corridor, Market Street. The plan encourages quality site planning so that infill development is compatible with the existing built environment. This proposed use is located to the rear of an existing retail structure and would have minimal impact on adjacent uses. Due to the size and location of this, staff believes the proposed use would be compatible with the use on-site and the surrounding properties. So staff does believe this proposal is consistent with our comprehensive plan and our adopted focus areas. Request is reasonable in the public interest and is recommended conditional approval. On June 2nd, your planning commission recommended unanimously approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Let me go ahead, Mr. Chambers. Mr. O'Grady?
Tell me what the half-red circle was for. I, you got on the, on those little, you know, red dots, you got a half-red dot on increased densities and infill development, mid-rise parking decks, or other urban solutions. What, what, what's the negative part here?
There's no residential density here.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chambers. At this time, I'd like to recognize the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Mark Walton at Walton Engineering. I'm a registered professional engineer, and I'm a consultant representing the applicant on this project. So I prepared the applications and the plans, and really don't have much to say. Spare your time. Just, we'll answer questions as you need, but the... See, there was one thing I wanted to point out. The reason for wanting to do this building at 16 feet tall and have, and it also has, needs to have entrances to the building from the outside. RB does not allow entrances to the building from the outside and the interior entrances. And this building is planned to be used for storage of RVs and trailers and boats. So it was not feasible to put the, a building on this property under the initial zoning. But there was also not allowed a height of a building of above 12 feet in the RB zoning district. And also, even in the CS zoning district, that was not allowed. That's the reason we went for the variance, was to allow height of 16 feet, a 4 feet height increase. And the CS does allow entrance from the outside of the storage building. So that's the reasons for needing these changes. And also would like to mention, and Mr. Chambers can verify this, I understand that the planning department is in the process of redoing the, their development ordinance, and that in, in that, right now, the draft, I guess you'd call it, that they have, they are eliminating the 12-foot building height. So at some time in the near future, that would go away anyway. But otherwise, I'm just mainly here to answer your questions.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, sir, Mr. Gray.
Just one question, sir. There's no exit from the back of this property?
No, sir.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Riven Bart?
That, the, the strip of land to the rear of this property, Mr. Walton, that divide, that separates the commercial from the, the rear of the houses at front, Northwood Drive, that's a, is that a, I know it's, it's some type of easement, but it's perpetual. I mean, it's not going away. It's not going to be closed and built on. That's a, that's a natural built-in buffer between...
Well, there will be buffers as required by the ordinance, landscape buffers and building buffers. So we will, and that's something, other thing I was trying to think of a minute ago. We're in total agreement with everything that the planning staff has recommended and the TD, the UD, I mean, the TRC. So we have no objections to anything in this, in this. I know that didn't answer your question.
Yes, it did. But in addition to that, I'm trying to help you here. In addition to that, you've got that additional buffering between the rear property line of this property you're talking about and the people who live on Northwood Drive.
Yes, that's right.
There you go. Thank you.
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Walton, the, I guess the, is, how will the, the vehicles that are stored by, they, they come down, I guess this is, I guess this, west side or of the building? Is that how they would get in and out?
Yes, they'll come down either the east side or the west side. And there was one comment by the fire department that they need at least a 20-foot gate if they were coming down the east side. But there's gravel on both sides, and there's gravel in the rear already, so there will be no need for additional pavement.
Are all those, what, are those containers? What is all that on the, I guess that's the east side? So, so you can get by on that side now? This picture we have right, oh, you, you can, you can, you're saying there's gravel on both sides of the building? Is that what you, you were saying?
Yes. Yes, and that's, that's for fire department access.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, sir. This time, I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask, anyone in the public wishes to speak in favor or in opposition to this particular item, to please come forward. Okay. Madam Clerk, have we received any additional commentary? Okay. Any further questions from council? I'm going to close this public hearing and ask for the wishes of council.
I'd like to move the item.
Okay, we have a...
I move to approve the proposed amendment to rezone property located at 6756 Market Street from RB Regional Business District and R15 Residential District to CSCD Commercial Services Conditional District to allow for a mini warehouse, housing use, and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies of the comprehensive plan based on the application materials and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report. And to find approval of the rezoning request is reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposed use is located to the rear of an existing retail structure and would have minimal impact on adjacent uses.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember O'Grady, second by Councilmember Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first reading as a motion to waive second reading. Motion made by Councilman Riven Bart, second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item PH five, which is an ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close, and repair or demolish dwelling at 413 South 13th Street as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article five, Chapter 16 of the city code, and directing that a notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. And at this time, I'd like to recognize interim city manager, Mr. Tony Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brian Renner, code enforcement officer, is here to answer questions, but you've received a request to continue this item to 111621. The staff is in concurrence with that request and would recommend you to do so.
Okay, do we have a motion to continue this item to 111621? We have a motion made by Councilmember Spears.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Barnett. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item has been continued to November 16, 2021. The next item of business, which is item PH six, which is an ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close, and repair or demolish a dwelling at 518 North 11th Street as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article five, Chapter 16 of the city code, and directing that a notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. And I will note that the attorney representing the owner is requesting a continuous of this one also. To what date specific, please?
That would be two weeks from today on the meeting of eight, 321. Also, we would recommend, as a result of this, that the 90-day compliance period be shortened to 75 days compliance in order to accommodate the additional two-week delay.
Okay. Very good. Do we have, do we have a motion to continue the sign to eight, 321?
Some move.
Councilmember Anderson?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Barnett. Okay. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passing unanimously. I will note also that that 75-day clause that you'd mentioned, Tony, is part of this.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our ordinances. Item O1 is an ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close, and repair or demolish dwelling at 903 Walnut as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article five, Chapter 16 of the city code, and directing that a notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. At this time, I'd like to recognize our interim city manager, Mr. Tony Carter.
Mr. Mayor, this is the second reading. Mr. Renner is available for questions, but we have not prepared a presentation. Okay. Be glad to answer questions as you so choose.
Are there any questions from council? If not, what are the wishes of council? In respect of the ordinance? We have a motion to, we have a motion to approve by Mayor Protem Haynes, second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously with only one reading because it was a second reading. Item O2 is an ordinance modifying the existing CB CD Community Business Conditional District located at 3819 Carolina Beach Road to allow for a 4,160 square foot vehicle wash. I will announce that this ordinance was continued from council's June 15, 2021 meeting under a second reading. And so at this time, I'd like to recognize our interim city manager, Mr. Tony Carter.
Mr. Mayor, again, this is the second reading. Mr. Brian Chambers, our senior planner, is available for questions, but we do not have a presentation available for you. We answer this, I'd be glad to answer your question. Okay.
I've got, I've got a question for staff. Has there been any changes or any, are you guys still standing on the position that you stood on the last time we were approaching the item?
Yes, sir.
And it was clear that you, the staff had said that we're not denying this because of a second car wash. That had nothing to do with the denial.
It was aesthetics. It was the corner of the intersection. We want, we didn't feel it was appropriate use for that, the corner of the intersection.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move the item on second reading.
Okay, we have a motion made by Councilman Riven Bart.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, it passes four, three. Okay. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item O3A, which is an ordinance making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $57,900 for the Portia Mills Hines Improvement Project to award a contract for improvements. And then item O3B, which is a resolution authorizing the award of a bid to Paragon Building Corporation of Wilmington, North Carolina in the amount of $643,758 for the Portia Mills Hines Improvement Project. At this time, I'd like to recognize our interim city manager, Mr. Tony Carter.
Mr. Mayor, Amy Beatty, our community services director, will overview these two items for you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and city council. This is an ordinance appropriating funding to the Portia Mills Hines Project and a companion resolution that awards the contract for the improvements to Paragon Building Corporation. In June of 2019, city council appropriated $67,100 for the design of a restroom building, area and athletic court lighting, and pedestrian paths for Portia Mills Hines Park. 700, excuse me, $658,200 for construction of the improvements was appropriated in October of 2019, and a design contract was awarded that same month. In the spring of 2020, neighborhood residents requested a change in project scope to include a picnic shelter... a picnic shelter for community events, and this was added to the project's scope. This project was funded outside of the city's traditional capital improvement program due to the importance of the park to the neighborhood located within the Blue Ribbon Commission's youth enrichment zone and the city's partnership with Voyage, also of the youth enrichment zone and the increased organized activities that were taking place in the park. Bids were opened on April 30th with Paragon Building Corporation being the lowest bid in the amount of $626,258. Staff recommends awarding the base bid as well as an alternate bid to build a concrete band around, surrounding the shelter in the amount of $17,500. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Rabinbaum.
Ms. Beatty, what is the total outlay that the city has invested in Portia Heinz to date? And I guess that would include this, what we're going to approve tonight. Is that, is that everything?
That is, yes, that's everything I listed. So beginning in June of 2019, council appropriated $67,100 for design. And then 658,200 was appropriated for construction. And we're requesting an additional $57,900 be appropriated tonight. There is enough funding remaining in the project budget to meet the project bid, however, we're recommending moving the $57,900 into the project so that there's contingency.
So we've got 67 plus 658 plus 579 plus 175, that's the total dollars?
That's correct.
Okay. I have another question, but Tony, it's on, it's on the next item, but it pertains to this one. Can I go ahead and ask it now?
Sure, go right ahead.
The Paragon Corporation, is that the same Paragon Corporation that did the main fire station?
Yes, sir. What, we, we had disqualified them as a responsive responsible bidder up until recently, and they had presented information in accordance with their bid or in conjunction with their bid that indicated that there might have been a change in, in their status. And so we went ahead and accepted their bid. If you want to get into the details of that, I suspect Mr. Joy would be much more qualified to deal with that than what I.
I mean, they have, they had a lot of history with the city.
Yes, sir.
I was just curious about, okay.
Yes, sir, we, we had two, we had two fire stations that we had some issues with. One was the main one, one was Fire Station Number Two on AP Drive. And you'll recall, we came to a settlement on that one. So it's been over 10 years though now since we.
I don't need anything further.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will add that, as I stated in my introduction, the bids were open, open April 30th. We're just now at awarding on July 20th, and that was because of the additional due diligence that the city attorney's office did with Paragon. We know that the neighborhood's very anxious to get this park moving, but we wanted to ensure that we had a qualified bidder to award the contract to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we're comfortable with Paragon now?
Yes, in addition to the meetings that the attorney's office had, we checked some recent references, including a similar park project that was done in Brunswick County. And the references were all neutral or positive.
And Amy, just for the public, could you state what we're getting, what's going, what the construction is going to be at Portia Mills Heinz Park?
Sure, it will be a new restroom building, basketball court lighting, area lighting, pedestrian paths, and a picnic shelter slash pavilion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Let's take, let's go ahead and take the ordinance first, O3A. What are the wishes of council?
Move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion made by Mayor Protem Haines, second by Councilmember Barnett. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first reading as our motion to waive second reading.
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Barnett, second by Councilmember Spears. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. Now let's go to item O3B, which is the resolution authorizing the award of the bid to Paragon Building Corporation of Wilmington in the amount of $643,758 for the Portia Mills Heinz Improvement Project. What are the wishes of council?
I'm often move that motion and also want to just mention that, again, we want to shout out to the kids who came here two years ago and kind of started this project. And I want to say to them that the system works. So it does work. It may take a minute, but it does work. So I would probably want to recommend this motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made by Councilmember Barnett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Congratulations and Godspeed, and let's get this project done.
Yes, sir.
Okay, our next item of business, which is item O4A, which is a resolution authorizing interim city manager to tune to a supplemental agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation to accept additional surface transportation block grant program, direct attributable funds for the city of Wilmington and South College Road at Holly Tree Road Pedestrian Improvement Project. And then item O4B, which is the ordinance making the supplemental appropriation in the amount of $213,960 to the Streets and Sidewalks Capital Projects Fund for the South College Road and Holly Tree Road Pedestrian Improvement Project. At this time, I'd like to recognize our interim city manager, Mr. Cottle, Mr. Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our city engineer, David Cowell, will present this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present this item for approval of a supplemental agreement with the NC DOT to accept $213,960 for the Holly Tree Road Pedestrian Improvements. This will connect the Central College Trail and Greenville Loop Trail Transportation Bond Projects. The city's pedestrian and bike improvement committee has identified funds in the amount of $53,490 for the 20% match. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, Mr. Cowell? Okay, thank you, Mr. Cowell. Do you have one, Ms. Anderson?
No, I was going to move the item.
Thank you.
I was just going to say that the trail that is, goes from approximately Holly Tree all the way up to South, to South 17th Street gets traffic, but it's going to get a bunch of traffic now because people can get across College Road going both ways.
Yes, sir.
It's going to, it's great, thank you.
All right, we're going to take the resolution first, O4A. What are the wishes of council? We have a motion made by Councilmember Rabinbaum.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. That brings us to item O4B, which is the ordinance making the supplemental appropriations in the amount of $213,960 to the Streets and Sidewalks Capital Project Fund for the South College Road and Holly Tree Road Pedestrian Improvement Project. What are the wishes of council in respect of the ordinance? Motion made by Mayor Protem Haines, second by Councilmember Rabinbaum. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first reading as our motion to waive second reading. Motion made by Councilmember Barnett. Second by Councilmember Rabinbaum. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item O5A, which is the ordinance appropriating fund balance for the general fund totaling $14,124 to the community services for Riverfront Park Season Box slash Table. And item O5B, which is the resolution approving a policy for use of a season box table at Riverfront Park Amphitheater and distribution of reserved tickets at Riverfront Park Amphitheater and the Hugh Morton Amphitheater at Greenfield Lake. At this time, I'd like to recognize our interim city manager, Mr. Cottle, Mr. Cottle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To begin with, item O5A, we would ask that you vote this item down or take no action on it. Thank you, Mr. Joy. The policy that had been proposed earlier had stated that the proceeds for the, from the events at the Livo Camp Theater would actually go to pay for these tickets, this particular situation. We have not received that money yet, so what we would advocate is that we just delay payment for the box until such time as we receive the revenue from the first events. That should be within the first quarter of this year. So we just ask that you take no action on this item.
Okay, very good.
Second, the second item is, the original proposal was from the staff to limit the number of events and the reasons for which public could be offered or members of the public could be offered tickets for events to the, to the Livo Camp Theater. In this case, we heard some discussion going on amongst the staff and the council. And then also, we had some discussion with you, Mr. Mayor, on this item, which has resulted in us considering a substitute proposal. And I'd be glad to turn that back over to you to let you talk about that.
Well, in what I, I know we had some discussion about this yesterday. I appreciate, Mr. Joy, and your staff looking around the state of North Carolina to find a policy that we could use if we were going to purchase this box for the city. And you had did an exhaustive search. What we found was most cities around the state don't have a policy. We appreciate the fact that you tried to find a policy and then tried to create one, of which we weren't too keen on. And of course, we heard from a lot of people in the public. So I have put together a substitute resolution with the help of Mr. Joy, and you can guys can take a look at it right here, resolution approving a policy for use of the season box table at Riverfront Park Amphitheater and the distribution of reserved tickets at Riverfront Park Amphitheater and Hugh Morton at Greenfield Lake. I believe that, you know, the policy that we saw yesterday was what we could do, but the policy that hopefully will pass tonight is the policy that we should do. And my perspective is this, that I do believe that the city of Wilmington should have a box at that venue and that park. We get a lot of folks that do come to this community looking to create jobs, to bring companies here. And one of the attributes of this, of this park and this amphitheater is that people like it and people may move their companies here and to, and to also give an opportunity for companies that are thinking of moving here or creating jobs here or that are already here and wanting to expand their businesses to be able to come out and enjoy what this community has to offer, which is a lot. And this is a great thing for us. So that's number one. I want the city manager to have the full discretion of what qualifies and who attends. I think that's very important because I believe this should be only for economic development purposes of job creation, retention or expansion. Council members, because this was a big thing the other day, are going to pay for their own tickets. I don't think any one of us are asking for any free rides or want any free tickets. And we were, we would pay for our own way to these, to these concerts, just like any other person or any other citizens. And then any unused tickets will be resold either through Live Nation or otherwise it's allowed by state law. Mr. Cottle, I guess you would notify them that nobody's going to be using the box for this particular concert and they can resell the tickets and for this, for us, and that's the way it would go.
Yes, sir.
I think it's a pretty simple, straightforward policy. I want to clear up any misconstrued things that have been out there in the public. Somebody made a comment that we were going to take developers there? Absolutely not. This is for economic development and for job creation only. And I think it's a good thing for the city to, like a lot of cities around the state have boxes and have in their venues, from Charlotte to Raleigh to Greensboro to Winston-Salem to Asheville. And this is no different. So with that, I would ask that this new resolution, I think you have it before you be looked at, and then that the public policy, the policy that I've just laid out, which is a very simple policy, be part of that. Mr. Joy, you have anything else?
Mr. Mayor, you stole all my thunder. The differences in what council has before them, let me make it clear. Council has a substitute resolution. We had to simply take out some of the information that is no longer necessary because the substitute policy is streamlined and it is very straightforward. It's economic development only with a focus on job creation and retention. You're absolutely correct. It'll be in the city manager's discretion to decide what qualifies and who can best represent the city with that. Also, council will pay their own way, even when they're doing their job. That is something that you had asked, Mr. Mayor, that be put forward to your colleagues. And also, any unused tickets will be declared by this policy as surplus, and then we will actually offer them for resale, whether it be through Live Nation or another means. We will decide on the exact mechanism in the days to come. That's just a brief overview of the differences. And I will say that Amy Beatty and Meredith Everhart both worked very hard on this, and they did that research that we were able to bring forward to you.
Okay, very good. Staters?
A couple of comments. It's a little too complicated to hit on all of it, but you know, I guess I'd assumed all along we were going to pay our own ticket. And, and that's when I asked a question yesterday at Agenda, you know, Meredith, and was kind of surprised with the response. But I do hate a little bit that we're kind of giving into some, I saw a headline on WCT, the sensationalism of the journalism is what's wrong with the country. I mean, it, when you, when you, when you print something like that, it's so, it was, it was inaccurate, the, it was just, it's, it's a problem. And I don't know why that, you know, we're going to pay for this with proceeds from that. There's four seats. That's, it's four seats is what we're talking about here. We're talking about, we were talking about rewarding some employees potentially. I think that's a, what is wrong with that? You know, what is wrong with taking some kids there that might not be able to afford it? You know, I, I just hate that we let, I had Tony pull something up just to, you know, to kind of show something, and I, the trial, we have a travel allowance, each one of us, about 4150 a year. So you're just, you know, 25,000 roughly dollars. And I didn't, I didn't pull 20 and 21 because of COVID. But I mean, this is a frugal council. I mean, 18, we spent five. We spent 12, half, under half of it the next year, 19. Two people spent zero in 19. Four people spent zero in 18. It's just the insinuation that, that in the, in the media bothers me and letting it dictate policy, you know, is, it bothers me. Because if, now if it was reported accurately and everything in there was correct, talking about an apartment developer, that, that's not what we were talking about. You know, so it bothers me. I'll support this policy. You know, we can tweak it over time. I do agree that we need to have a box there. We may find we don't, but right now, you, they're, they're sold out. If you don't get one, you're never going to get one. If we find, it's almost like a pilot program to me. If we don't, we find we don't use it, don't need it, well, you know, next year's a different year and we can change it. But I'm sorry, I had to get that off my chest. It really bothered me when I, when I saw the headline and read the article and found it troubling.
Ms. Haines?
Well, I, I just want to chime in behind Mr. Anderson, that the travel policy, everybody that did spend any money, and I think we are extremely frugal, everybody that did do something went to a conference or went to a convention and gave up their time from their job and/or their family and whatever they are doing to go and lobby for what this city needs. And so it wasn't like some fun trip. You're, you're, you know, working all day on behalf of the city. So I know, I'm just trying to clear that up for the public.
My point was simply, we're not running around spending the public's money like, you know, it's like in our, in our wallet.
Absolutely, but that, that doesn't sell newspapers and, and TV ads and stuff. So it's a shame that we've come to that here. And, you know, hopefully, hopefully the press can rise to the occasion and, and report things more appropriately.
Well, there's a way you can overcome it. Just don't pay their damn attention to them. Have the political will, do what you feel like's in your heart. That's what I do.
I will piggyback off of what Neil said. And as I was thinking about this yesterday and this morning, I just did the math. So if our population is around 123,000 and this box was 14,000, and you divided the 14,000 by 123,000, that's around about 11 cents that the taxpayers are paying. 11 cents. Grand total of 11 cents. But you know, it wasn't, it was an issue. It was an issue. And, and, you know, we were kind of guilted into feeling like we weren't being honest with our constituents. And so, you know, just me being that technical guy, I needed to have the facts, how much I was costing the taxpayer.
Well, I'm going to go back again to the original concept. When we talked about this, we asked our city attorney and his great staff to evaluate research around the state of North Carolina for a public policy that we can look at. They not only went around the state of North Carolina looking for that, knocking on doors, they went outside of the state of North Carolina and looking for it. What we found interesting was there's very few people that had it, and we were trying What we found interesting was there's very few people that had it and we were trying to do one. The policy that you folks put together that we heard about was something that we just wanted to adjust. We wanted to be very clear. I do believe very strongly that the city should have a box there. I do believe that it will be used for economic development purposes for job creation. We already had people that came to the park. I know this for a fact from an economic development. They brought some people there that bought for their own tickets. No city initiation on that one. They brought people there that fell in love with it. And I think that what speaks volumes about what this is going to be able to do for the possibility of recruitment. But more importantly, the economic impact that this park had the other night in downtown Wilmington, the restaurants, the bars, the hotels, not only in Wilmington, but across the river in Leland at Riceford Beach, even going down to Curie Beach, was phenomenal. Twenty-one thousand people attended over three days. A lot of those people came from out of town and it was a great event. And I just also want to say again to Tony and his staff, what an outstanding job our police department did, our fire department did. Just the whole thing put together very well, very well thought out. I'm sure there's little glitches in anything that happens on opening night, but I think we're going to work through them very easily. But the other great thing about it, because I had an opportunity to walk with a lot of the crowd out of there, they walked. And by the way, for those folks that were concerned about the parking, I did find one right here on Fourth Street. There was more than enough parking and a lot of people walked there. There's five thousand and forty spaces of public parking, not including the private parking. So if you have a problem parking, I don't know what the issue is because there's plenty of it out there. But anyway, I think this clears everything up. And Mr. Barnett?
Well, it does. And I think that one of the challenges that we have as political leaders is we try to really prove to be transparent. And I think that was one of the things that we were trying to emphasize even on yesterday, that we were really transparent and not, you know, stealing from the public or the taxpayers or anything like that. But there's a section in the Bible that says this, though. It says, flee the very appearance of evil. Meaning that you don't want to give anybody an opportunity to take your good and make it appear to be evil. And so with that in mind, I recommend that we follow this.
Yeah. And one other thing I want to clarify too, because it was something in here about us taking this, Kevin alluded to it, but this space, this box is going to be paid for from proceeds that are generated at the park. No taxpayers' money will go into this, okay?
Not even eleven cents.
Not even eleven cents.
Can I raise a question? Because I just got to read this for the first time. Somebody mentioned, you know, bringing young people. How would that fit in here?
No, we didn't. We talked about it originally at the Agenda briefing yesterday about the possibility of sharing this with nonprofit organizations or even with HR for employees that we wanted to recognize. And we've axed all of that and just gone just strictly for economic development and job creation.
So we have been a youth program in the city. We couldn't give them a couple of dollars?
Because there's twenty-six nonprofit organizations. How do you give it to which ones and who do you give it to and stuff of that nature?
You're going to have that problem no matter who comes to the door.
Maybe we can revisit it again one day in the future. But right now, I think the best thing for us to do is just to pass this and move forward.
I hope we do revisit it eventually.
Mr. Mayor, is a point of process. If there is a motion, if the motion maker could specify that they're moving the substitute resolution. And also, if after you're done with the resolution, if you could circle back and simply take a vote on the ordinance that you are taking no action, that would be helpful for the record.
Okay.
I'd offer a motion that we move on the substitute resolution.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Do you want me to read the comments received?
Yes, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry. First received, their comment from Barbara, who lives up on O two Deer Spring Lane. After reading WHQR article, this, whether it's a policy versus a proposal, it sets off red flags specifically in areas such as ethnics, favoritism, i.e. developers, fairness or equity, where is the oversight or need? I'm a taxpayer and property owner. I find it disturbing to have residents' tax dollars allotted into this fund without input from the city's citizens. Next comment was received from Jared Klein of eight fourteen North Third Street. Live Nation setting fireworks off at twelve-thirty on a Sunday is ridiculous. Is this going to be a regular thing? Some people actually have to work on Monday. And from Richard at sixty-two twenty-five Ambleside Drive. I do not appreciate the idea of using tax dollars to buy concert tickets at the new city-owned amphitheater. It's just more politics. Thank you.
Neither do I. Thank you.
Well, let's just make that clear after that comment. Let's just make that clear one more time, that this substitute policy is not, even though the original one would have only cost the taxpayers, according to Mr. Spears, eleven cents per citizen, this now is going to not be paid for with taxpayer money, but come from the proceeds of the operation of the park. Just to clarify that.
Did you check behind me on that math?
I did not, but I will if you like.
You don't want Mr. Joy checking behind you on math.
So Jennifer is much better. You moved it, right?
Okay, so I'd like to offer a motion that we move on the substitute resolution, including the substitute policy.
A motion made by Councilmember Barnett, second by Mayor Pro Tem Haynes. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we go six to one. Okay.
True.
Six to two. Six, I mean, five to, five to two. Passes five to two.
I'm good.
Mr. Mayor, if you could circle back to that ordinance and if you could just have a vote to take no action on it.
On item oh-five-A?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the ordinance is appropriate in the fund balance
for the general fund totaling fourteen thousand, one twenty-four to community services for a Riverfront Park season box slash table. We have a motion not to take any kind of action on this one. I'll make the motion. Anybody second it?
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Haynes. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, that brings us to our next item, which are resolutions. This was continued. Our first one is item R one, which is resolution directed in the interim. City managed to process an amendment to the official zoning map of the city of Wilmington for property located at thirty-eight twenty-one Carolina Beach Road. I will note that this one was from June fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one. And at this, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Neil Anderson. Mr. Anderson?
Well, I'll just explain the resolution to the public. We talked about it a little bit yesterday. The thought process here at the time was we'd had, the planning commission had had a meeting and the conversation centering around, I forget the item, but the item earlier regarding the car wash in a nearby location, centered around spacing of car washes and whether we might have two in one area. Because the piece of property in question with R one is a CD zone for a car wash. And it has, I don't know exactly how much time Mr. Joy may be able to tell us, but more than two years, two or three years have gone by. And nothing has happened with that prop, with that development. It's sitting idle and it's basically what it felt like. And we had similar discussions at council when we considered this the first time, that is, the rezoning that passed earlier tonight. And my goal was just to try to clean it up and not let them kind of be the placeholder, so to speak, and not allow other folks to come in there by just holding that hostage. But our planning department, in consultation with them, they would like to leave this property in a CDs, zone seat with a CD, I don't know what the term is, conditional district because they want to control, have more control over what goes on there rather than just having it, you know, go back to whatever it was zoned before with a straight CD zoning. I've rambled, but the point is here, everyone around there has had to go, has had to, the Harris Teeter across the way, the convenience store has had to do a, present a CD type zoning. And planning would like this property to have to do the same thing. So I would, strange, but things have evolved. And I would ask that we, I guess I would move to, how do you say? Move to strike it or move to?
Move to deny.
Deny, sorry. Need a little help there, thank you. Move to deny it.
You've made a motion to deny the item. Okay, second to that? Do we have a second to that?
I would second it. I have a question.
Okay, yes, sir.
Oh, every time we do a rezoning with a conditional district, it's almost, it's almost like spot zoning because each one has its own flavor. I mean, we put different conditions on different projects.
Councilmember, you are correct. There is a misunderstanding, a popular misunderstanding, that spot zoning is per se illegal. It's not. It has to be reasonable. Conditional district rezoning is a more reasonable version of it than what we previously had that the courts have allowed. So yes, you're absolutely right. This is a version, a subspecies, if you will, of spot zoning. And it does require the applicant's agreement to each condition. And therefore, you have to have an applicant that's bringing that poll.
Okay, well, the reason I brought that up, there's a reason, is if we leave that CD on there, whoever comes along, if it's not the present landowner to develop it, they've more or less got to conform to the conditions that we put on it when it was going to be a car wash. And they would have to come down and start back over. So why not let them start back over now because it's not going to be a car wash? And I don't know that the conditions were that specific to a car wash, but it's not a clean CB. It's a CB with somebody else's conditions built in.
I think Mr. Satterfield wants to speak to that.
Mr. Rabinberg, I hope I can follow your question, but?
Well, let me ask it again. Let me ask it again. When Mr. Abdel Mohammed, I think I got that right, came down and got that property or presented his plan for a car wash, it was already zoned CB. And we put conditions on it. Wasn't it already zoned CB?
It was CB special use district. It was part of when that Food Lion Shopping Center was zoned. It was early nineties, maybe mid-nineties.
Okay, so he had to get, he had to conform to our staff and this council's recommendations for a CD conditions. Well, now he's not going to be building a car wash there. So those conditions, if any of them were specific to a car wash or the way his plan was laid out, that won't necessarily apply to the next buyer that comes along and wants to build a gift shop.
He would have to come modify, just like the next owner would have to modify unless they want to comply with the current conditional district zone, which is what you're trying to say, I believe. They would have come through this modification process.
How about if it's zoned CB and somebody comes along with a plan that's allowed by right?
If it's zoned CB, they could do it by right, absolutely. But if you, if we were to process, and this is the conversation we have with Mr. Anderson, I believe Mr. Anderson did a good job yesterday articulating this. If we, if the city processes to just community business straight without a CD on it, that is giving them the ability to do things that the Food Lion Shopping Center cannot do. The O two item you just voted on tonight could not do. Mr. Anderson mentioned the Harris Teeter across Carolina Beach Road. They all have stricter standards now because of the conditional district. So if this smaller piece of property at this address that this resolution is trying to address is zoned CB, that they have more lenient standards, if you will. Whatever's by right in CB will be allowed. So staff's recommendation would be to keep it as a conditional district. And then as someone wants to develop that property, it may not be a car wash that they can come in, modify their plan, come through the process. This board gets to hear and see what the plan is for that property.
Or they could come in and build the car wash.
Exactly.
Okay, all right. So that's why we're moving to deny this, so not send it back to planning commission.
Well, Kevin, the reason I brought it up?
It was confusing.
The reason I brought this up was to disqualify that car wash.
But if you do it, then what he just said, they had many more choices. We wouldn't know what was going to come. So you want to deny it. Okay, now I understand.
They asked me to rely on the market. I honestly could go either way. I was going with what the staff asked.
And if this board is unknown, it's just general CB. There could still be a car wash there. It could be a gift shop. It could be a convenience store. It could be a fast food restaurant, an office building.
Well, years ago, if you were doing site selection for a McDonald's, they wanted to be as far away from a Burger King and a Wendy's and Bojangles as they could. And now they like to get on four corners because they know you're not going to eat at McDonald's every day. And I just, we can't determine the market. You know, people come down here and they have plans and stuff. You know, we've got so many conditional districts, it would just be impossible to go back through. I look at some of these things sometime and I know that they're violating the terms of their conditions because I helped get them passed or whatever. It's a nightmare. And I just, you know, if it was already a conditional district, special district, I understand, but I agree with Mr. Anderson that, you know, we can't, we can't sit here and determine what the market is. The market takes care of itself. It always has and it always will.
Okay, we have a motion to deny by Mr. Anderson. Second by Councilmember Rabinberg. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I am passing unanimously. I'm going to turn it over to reports of the evaluation committee. And I'm going to recognize Councilmember Kevin O'Grady, who is the chairman of that committee.
Yes, and I serve on that committee with Councilmember Barnett and with Mayor Pro Tem Mark Haynes. Every year, we evaluate the employees. We have three employees to evaluate. Normally, we do the city manager, which we did not do this year because we've just elevated our new city manager. We also evaluate the city attorney and the city clerk. Those evaluations are a pretty comprehensive process. Self-evaluation by the employees, then evaluation by each of the council members. And then finally, the council meets in closed session for a consensus evaluation and for a salary recommendation. Of course, all of that is subject to confidentiality. Tonight, we will vote on the proposed raises. And first is for our city attorney, John Joy. The recommended increase is three point five percent, which will bring him to a new salary of one hundred ninety-one thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars, eighteen cents. I would move that item.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Grady, second by Councilmember Barnett. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I am passing unanimously.
And second, we had the evaluation of Penny Spicer Sidbury, our city clerk, and the consensus. And I move to pass tonight a merit increase of three percent to ninety-one thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and eighteen cents. And I move that item.
We have a motion made by Councilmember Grady, second by Councilmember Spears. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously.
And that is the complete report of the evaluations committee.
Thank you. This concludes the regular agenda. The items we brought forward by our interim city manager, Ms. McCottle.
Got a couple of items this evening, Mr. Mayor. First of all, we have a request for a special use permit for eight seventeen. We just wanted to make sure that council would agree to be here in person for that meeting in order to be able to hear the quasi-judicial nature of the proceeding. Second item is to remind you that you have a workshop on Friday morning on the land development code. You have been provided updates from the planning division of complete update and then a summary item that has also gone out to you. If you have any questions, certainly feel free to contact Mr. Satterfield or anybody else on staff. Yes, the meeting will be here as opposed to anywhere else. You'll be here on Friday. You'll be here on the first meeting in August. And then we're back in Thalia in second meeting in August.
With air conditioning?
Well, yeah, assuming we've got air conditioning. If not, we may be in the Harrelson Building.
Mr. Jordan?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and council, I would just like to say that it is an honor and a privilege to serve you and the city, excuse me, the people of Wilmington. And just thank you, it's with the greatest appreciation that I received that evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I want to say thank you and express my appreciation to you and the council. Thirty-five years. Thirty-five years serving the city of Wilmington and 29 of those years has been a city clerk and it is my honor because this is my hometown. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. Mr. Spears?
Yes, sir. On Saturday, I had the opportunity to celebrate my grandson's first birthday, so happy birthday, Ryan. And then tomorrow, my son Asher turns 10 years old, so happy birthday, Asher. And I want to talk about the difficulty in the decisions that we make being a governing body and the relationship. Sometimes these relationships appear to be one-sided. We ask that the public and our constituents hold us accountable, but there's also a part that you have to do as well, as it relates to safety, as it relates to crime, as it relates to being informed. That's how we make this thing work. So I hope going forward, you appear or you are as transparent with us as we are with you. This is my hometown, I love it here. I want to see Wilmington be the greatest city on the planet, but it's going to take all of us to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Anderson?
Attended the second set of the concert Friday night and the whole thing Saturday, and even had friends coming to town or just, they just wanted to go down Friday afternoon and just kind of just scope it all out. It was a proud, I was proud of the city, the park. It'd be nice when it gets completely finished and it's, you know, just all tidied up and the beds made. But I saw people from High Point, Athens, Georgia, Atlanta, Charlotte, and they were a lot, a lot of them in hotels. And I don't know, it was just the mood, the vibe, the feel, it was nice. And I look forward to seeing the other acts that are, you know, the variety that are coming in and all the different folks that'll get to experience that facility. Very proud to have been a part, a small part of making that come to fruition. Proud of Wilmington and look forward to the future.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Mr. Ryan Mark?
I saw something today on TV that was historic. I saw the, I want to call it the space shot. I've never seen anything like it. I couldn't wait to see how they were going to do that. But this capsule takes off and got up to about a couple thousand miles an hour, straight up, went all the way up 60-some miles, and then the capsule that the five people were in separated from that big tube and that tube came back down and it showed how fast it was descending and it landed right on the bullseye where it was supposed to. The capsule is coming back down at about 1,500 miles an hour and they're just having a big old time inside. You're talking to them and they're talking to you and it comes down and four parachutes come out and it sits down on the ground. And about two minutes later, all the trucks come up to it. I mean, the whole thing lasted less than 15 minutes, but my point in mentioning it, that's the birth of commercial space travel. And it's, I mean, it's exciting. It only cost $28 million to fly on it this time. Hopefully that'll get down to somewhere around 200 bucks where we all can do it.
And it was all done remotely. There was somebody on there.
No pilot, no nothing. It was all controlled by the ground.
Remote control.
Madam Pro Tem?
Well, I just want to say congratulations to Amy Beatty and especially the mayor who has led this tremendous economic development operation in creating this park. It is the greatest economic development thing we have done in this city, certainly, probably ever. And for all of the people that were worried about a number of bathrooms and parking and the trash being picked up, it absolutely was not a problem. So we want to invite everybody to come on down and enjoy the park and just congratulations again. It's been a long time coming. Thanks to the citizens who voted for the parks bond and for the staff and the consultants and everybody that's worked so hard on this. So far, it seems really successful.
Thank you.
Continuing our musical theme here, there's another musical festival in town this week, the Viva Chi International Music Festival. Classical music for the most part. They'll be playing mostly at the Wilson Center, but also at some other locations. I happen to be able to attend a pop-up concert in the parking lot next to the Cotton Exchange and it was fabulous. So if you enjoy classical music, you've got a lot of opportunities to do this. This group picked Wilmington because of the wide range of venues we have.
Fantastic.
That's a real feather in our cap.
Thank you. Mr. Barnett?
Yes, a lot of great things are going on here in our city. One of the things I want to share is that on tomorrow, there's going to be a career fair from 9 to 1 o'clock at Legion Stadium. It's sponsored by the city. There are many opportunities for people to get jobs. You can actually fill out an application on the spot. So again, there's a career fair this Wednesday at Legion Stadium at, from 9 to 1 o'clock. So we hope people will get out there and get jobs. Secondly, Kevin mentioned his son had a one-year-old birthday. I want to shout out to Reverend Presiding Elder Emeritus Aaron Moore, who celebrated his 103rd birthday on Saturday as well. So we wanted to say happy birthday to you, Presiding Elder Emeritus. And then the last thing I want to share is I want us to be mindful, for those persons who have not chosen to be vaccinated, please think about that again and protect not only you, but protect the people around you. And then lastly, kids are going back to school soon, make sure that we protect them and just, we pray for teachers and students and parents as well.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Clifford. I just want to say on note, I just want to also say to Penny and to John and also to Tony, it's always great to work with you guys and you all do a phenomenal job day in a day out. We appreciate it, but the entire city staff does a great job. I was out there the, on the first night of the concert and I was just proud of the city staff and how they handled it and how they worked with everybody and did a great job. I also just want to say personally to each and every one of you, my fellow council members, none of this stuff is going to get done by one person. It's a team effort and a lot of, we made some pretty tough decisions to make sure that we did this park right and we upgraded it and we put it and made it first class. And that took some political courage and I just want to say to each and every one of you, it's because of y'all that this thing is done. And I just appreciate all of the work and time that we've put into it to make it right. And I think it's something that we'll be proud of for years to come. And I know that future generations of people that move to this community will enjoy this park for a long time to come. And in fact, the folks at Live Nation told us that when this thing went live the other night and it started streaming around the state of North Carolina, this is now the, considered the number one venue for concerts in the entire state. Not PNC Arena, not Walnut Creek, but Wilmington, North Carolina on the beautiful Cape Fear River is now considered the place to play. So I just want to say thank you to you, thank you to Live Nation, thank you to Amy and her staff and Live Oak Bank for supporting us and being part of this. It shows not only do we have a great city, but we also have good corporate clients that believe in this community and want to invest in this community. So with that, thank you for taking an interest in your government, we stand adjourned.